Six o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Carthage City Council for Thursday, May 5th, 2022. Would you call the bill, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Knappel?
Here.
Councilman Babcock?
Here.
Councilman Evil?
Here.
Councilman Peters?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Reese?
Here.
City Attorney Mullins.
Okay, we have three different sets of minutes from our budget workshop, April 7th, from our city council minutes, April 7th, and from our budget workshop, April 26th. Can I have someone to... Motion to approve, and then we'll discuss. Yes, sir.
Motion to approve all three.
Motion to approve all three. Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You all three approve. Consideration of bills over $10,000, which we have now, is that correct? Okay, then the next item on our business is a thing called citizens' concern. We start usually with any citizens in Carthage who have concerns about anything happening in their town. Do we have any citizens from Carthage here first to speak? That live in Carthage, I'm saying.
Or businesses in Carthage.
Our businesses in Carthage, yes, yes. Any businesses or citizens in Carthage?
We can... We're willing to go. We're a business in Carthage.
Okay.
And a citizen in Carthage.
Sure, go right ahead. Well, I tell you what, before we... We do have our EMS director.
EMA.
Oh, I'm sorry, I always get those... Yes, yes, EMA, who needs to speak to... We've been talking about how to get the streets blocked, and some of these gentlemen won't be here for a while, so do you want to speak to that first before we get started?
That's fine with me, if you want me to.
Yeah, please, please.
Right here, it'd be all right?
Well, if you don't mind coming up, because we're seeing your handsome face up here.
Okay. That's fine, thank you.
This is Sunny, just might give you your name and where you live.
Sunny Carter, and I live at 235 Flat Rock Road. I'm the chief of the Smith County Rescue Squad, director of emergency management, and county board chief. We have talked previously about this, where the city is issuing permits to organizations that wants to have functions downtown. And we have, over the period of years, we have furnished the equipment and the manpower to be able to close the streets downtown so the people could have their functions and be safe at the same time. Understand this year that the number of events downtown has grown quite a bit, and is going to require more time to come downtown and close the streets down, which there again, we have the equipment, but manpower with volunteer organization sometimes get to be a little iffy. One of the concerns I have, that if we have an event downtown, and it's like on a Saturday night, and all of our own Saturday nights, these permits that y'all are issuing, then if we're out on the call, our manpower will be on that call, a lot of our equipment will be on that call. So that could leave the people that's trying to have the event in a precarious situation. So I was talking with the mayor about how we could offset this if one way, or we wouldn't be involved every Saturday. And I got to remember, these guys have families, these guys have jobs, these guys have things to do on the weekend. A lot of young guys out there, they have girlfriends, they date, I can understand that. Last year, my wife and I and daughter many times come up here and did it ourselves. We don't mind that at all. Been doing this for 42 years, still enjoy it, believe it or not. But to get all this extra permits in that you've issued for this, now, we'll continue it like we always do, when you have your Oktoberfest, when we have the parades, whether it be Veterans Parade, Christmas Parade, homecoming parade, so in fact, we'll continue to do that, always. That's a Carthage event, and that, these Saturday evening events, they've gotten to be so many, that is, it's just gonna, I guess, put a little burden on us to be able to do this every Saturday that this comes up. So what the mayor and I had talked about, and the chief and I had talked about over the phone, is that I have enough cones, traffic cones out there, that we can furnish enough cones to shut down Third and Main to Second and Main. Takes about 25 cones. I have enough to do that, still be able to do what we need to do if we have to go out and use our cones out in the county somewhere. And then after each event, they put the cones in the, I started to say warehouse, the courthouse, and then the next event, the following week or whenever, they can pull them out, whoever's doing that, and set them out there, and when it's over with, they can put them back. We can do this all year long, and then at the end of that time, we can collect our cones, carry them back out there, so over again next year. Now, that may not be a physical thing for y'all, that may not be something the chief may want to do, because like you say, once you put those cones out there, that's advising the traffic there's something going on. But, and we don't stay with them, when we put them out, we leave too. So the one thing that whoever does it, if we come up with that solution, that those cones are not supposed to be moved until everything is cleared off the street, whatever they're doing there in the courthouse yard, all that gone, then they pull the cones back in. Perfect example, Mr. Billy knows what I'm talking about. Cones were moved one time too early, a gentleman was struck, Mr. Billy was struck by a vehicle coming down Main Street because the cones were moved, and there were still activities going on out there. So in order to do this, whoever's getting the permit, you all need to stress, if we go that route now, you all need to stress that those cones are not to be moved till everything is cleared from the courthouse lawn or the streets. And that, to me, that's the solution, but it may not be one you all want to go with. If not, then we'll look at another way to address this and approach it. And if that's feasible, then we'll do that route too. So that's going to be just up to what you all want to do as a police chief, we're here to help in any way we can.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Chief, does that sound like a good scenario to you?
I think if we go that route, we probably would need to meet with people ahead of time. I wouldn't mind a bit to do that, if they could come meet me during the daytime, maybe we could essentially set up cones, have pictures of kind of what it needs to look like, kind of thing, like this is the way it needs to be, this is the only way it's going to be, and if anything's changed or something like that, that's not going to work, and it needs to be taken care of beforehand, and that way they know how to do it. And if one of my officers happens to spot something that's not safe, we'll address it at that point in time, I guess. That's about how I know about it, unless y'all have any other options. I wouldn't mind us doing it, but at the same point in time, we're tied up on a call or something, you know, that's going to take priority over going and setting up this stuff, you know, and we may not be able to get to it for an hour or two, and then we don't want to put anything back, you know, and have events possibly being delayed based on us not being able to go through it, so.
Well, is it feasible for the people to put on the event?
Well, and that's what we're talking about, yeah, I mean, as long as they can do it, I don't mind a bit if they want to meet me a week, two prior, or whatever, we can go over where it needs to be put up at, how many cones need to be put out in this location, in this location, that kind of thing. It's still something that the town's going to have to think about if that's how they want to move forward.
One other point to that, in order to get this special permit, they have to have a million dollar liability contract, liability rider, I guess it is, for the town. So if something were to happen, the event would be liable for what happened. So that would, we would have to make that real clear, takes everything off of the town.
They would also have to understand, too, specific times, we're not, can't come in an hour early, or this and that, this is what this was approved for, this is when you're going to show up, this is when you're going to put the stuff out, we're not going to change it based on something else that's happened or something. I think it's going to have to be something we're going to have to set in stone and go by. If that's the way y'all want to move forward, we can try that and see if it works. If it doesn't work, we try something else.
I have just a question, just to clarify. So you'll give us a list of the standard ones that you are used to working, and you'll continue to work, right? Like you said, William Walton Days, you'll still do the parade?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Anything like that, that we've always done, year after year after year, yes, we'll continue to do that, no questions asked.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but I...
Yes.
Do we need a list of that, what that is?
No, we know what it is, what it is, and then people, it's just like the Christmas Parade, I get a week or two notice, and we start preparing for it, homecoming parade, Veterans Parade, we know where that is, so that's not an issue at all, it's just these events that we're having, you know, every other Saturday, I think the veterans do it, which we're glad to do for the veterans, we can't do enough for the veterans, and we're glad to do that, but now these others have picked up several others, so now that's going to, you know, require us to be...
Yeah, it increases.
And doing a lot more, you know, like I say, it'd be like, like the law enforcement said, you know, we may be out on the call up on Canyonport River looking for people that's turned their kayak over, and we could be up there for hours, and there's no streets blocked because we got our equipment up there.
Yep, that makes sense.
So Chief Davis would know who is... What are the extra people, the extra events, that doesn't normally get the cones?
Yes.
Yeah, he'd be coordinated in there.
Chief Davis has sent me a list of everybody that's requested a permit so far to this date. As far as I know, everything that I've got, I've sent to you. Yes, I received that from Chief Davis.
When they fill out the application, chief gets a copy?
Yes.
And then sends it on, yeah.
And I can't remember what the permit looks like, but there definitely needs to be a spot on there for a point of contact for that event, and I guess it depends if y'all want me to reach out to them, or do you want them to reach out to us to set this up? I mean, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
Is it worth our while to come up with, I guess it'd take probably four detour signs with ours, that when we have this, we put those out, like coming up Main Street, coming down Main Street, and then on Spring Street too?
Well, we don't close Spring Street during those events.
No, I'm talking, you're going to detour down Second, around, and back up, and vice versa.
Well, now, if that's what you want to do, that's fine. We don't have detour signs like that whatsoever.
I've got one down here that we don't even need up anymore, unless it's been taken out recently.
And if that's what the Carthage City wants to do, that's fine with us, we just don't have anything like that to put out there for that.
Leave that up to the chief and police to figure out.
Usually, once they get down there to Third Avenue, if it's there, they've only got rider left to go, and things, and I know, and it disrupts the flow of traffic, and some people, it just blows their mind, when we shut a street downtown in Carthage, and it just blows their mind, so, yes, sir.
I just want to tell you, thanks for doing all the past events, Councilman Babcock brought this up last month, and it is something that I feel I've taken for granted, that y'all do this volunteer service for the community at no charge. So I want to say thank you for that, I appreciate it, and I wanted to apologize, and I've taken that for granted on that, and I thought it was a good thing to bring up, that we're all communicating, not just saying, oh, they'll take care of it, because I feel like I kind of was just relying on it, so I just wanted to tell you thank you, and I apologize for taking it for granted on it.
That's no problem, no apology needed whatsoever, we're glad to do it, we just want to make sure we can be able to do it, and I just know one day, we haven't yet, but I just know one day, we're probably going to run into a little problem, especially when the weather comes on, everybody's out doing stuff, we could be at Bear Waller Gap looking for somebody that's got a fall, or got hurt, so, but apology, you don't have to worry about that, we're mad to do it.
So if it's okay, we'll just all kind of move forward and let them talk a bit, and we'll come up with what's safe for everybody, okay? Thank you, Sunny.
Okay, now, do you want to discuss the other issue while I'm up here?
Sorry.
About the donation.
Oh, oh, well...
That's under citizens' concerns.
It's under citizens', if you want, that's fine.
Well, the city of Carthage gives us $2,000 every year for our organization, Smith County Rescue Squad. I'm assuming everyone in this room knows about the Smith County Rescue Squad and what we do, and we provide that service for the county as a whole, and we do it for the cities of Carthage, South Carthage, and Gordsville, and we do it, like I say, that you give us a $2,000 donation. We provide a service for vehicle education, search and rescue, rope rescue, we do the events like we do downtown for the city when they have events, so this is what we provide for the city, that's what you get for your $2,000. We're not charging the city a penny, this is what you all give us, and we're so thankful to get it. And if you look at it, what's it costing the city, $2,000 a year, that's $5.48 a day, or about 23 cents an hour is what it costs the Carthage City to have the Smith County Rescue, and we're right here near your doorstep, we're on 513 Jefferson Avenue East out there, and I would say, in any event, whether it be a storm or whatever, we've got storms coming in tonight, if we're needed here in the city, we'll be here in minutes, because we've got facility right here in town, and so that's what you're getting for your $2,000, and we deeply appreciate you know how much that helps us. With the cost of things now, it's just unbelievable what rescue equipment costs, it's like the fire department, if it says fire, it's attached to it, it's high dollar, if it's rescue attached to it, it's high dollar. And we're in a situation where the donations are how we survive through the year. The county gives us X number of dollars a year, we use that for equipment, and this fundraising money that we have for the roadblocks, and what you all give us, and businesses give us, that is our, what we use to get us through the year, fuel, maintenance, and things like that. Rescue Squad is a volunteer organization. If we're here in town doing something because of a disaster, EMS is there, law enforcement's there, the fire department's there, your work crew is there, whatsoever, every one of those people are getting paid, they should get paid, they're doing that for a living. We're there, and if we're there 12 hours, 24 hours, 36 hours, we don't get a penny personally whatsoever, but we're going to be there, it doesn't matter, whether we get paid or not. But I just want to let y'all know, that's what you're getting for $2,000 is what we provide.
Plus y'all do the football games.
Yeah, oh, yes, sir, we do the football games, we've been doing that for many years, traffic control, the football games.
You do the fair, too?
The fair, yes, ma'am, we do the fair, excuse me, every year we do the fair.
Y'all worked incredibly during the 2010 floods.
2010 floods, yes, we did a lot right here in the city, we did all over the county, but the city as well, because in the flooding in the city for years, many, many years ago, y'all were too young to remember that, but many years ago, we virtually, basically lived down there on what I call a swimming pool row, down there, those rows of houses, and every year when the water got over, we was evacuate, and evacuate, and evacuate, and all that, but like I say, we're here for you when you need us, anytime of the day or night, we're here for you.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make one comment, Rescue Squad, Sunny and them have always been very gracious to help us anytime there's flooding, any events in town, power goes out, and the traffic lights quit working, they more than, more than happy to help us to make sure the town's safe, so I definitely think they deserve to be compensated somehow shape or form for their charitable organization, so just want to put that out there.
Thank you, chief, appreciate that.
Righty.
Any more questions at all?
Thank you, Sunny.
Good, you're welcome.
Righty. Okay, who else?
I want to start out with citizens, please, if I could. I want to speak to citizens' concerns as well.
Do, do, in fact, I need to get to the Turner Building, to the meeting up there.
Please do, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Let me come out there.
Okay, let's, we'll just take one at a time, if that's okay, all right? And then I think Monica, y'all are next, then.
And the reason that I wanted to speak, I'm sorry, Monica, I jumped ahead of you, is because I think all of our, that was just one example of what we have going on in Smith County, and I'm going to speak on, really on behalf of all of the wonderful nonprofits that we have here as a whole, and then everybody can explain what they do. The town of Carthage, like every other city in our nation, is searching for answers to social issues, overcrowded jails, increasing homelessness, high rates of drug and alcohol addiction, increasing mental health issues and suicide, especially among our teenagers. Smith County has a high number of children, a very high number of children in DCS custody. These problems have their roots in a, these issues have their roots in a common problem, a lot of it is the childhood trauma experienced by the individuals who are living there, often with no support system. Research has made the connection between trauma and or physical and social outcomes. Therefore, communities have a responsibility to develop a system of care to bring awareness and positive change for the future of our families and community. This is an important public health problem that taxpayers pay billions every year. To address the root of these issues, it will take a multi-agency approach, according to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. The caring and hardworking leaders and citizens, as well as our faith-based community in the town of Carthage, have proactively already built this system of care that addresses these social issues on a daily basis with minimal cost to the taxpayers. Our local nonprofits, and I'm not going to name them all, all the ones that are here tonight, everyone is valuable, the museum, they all have a service. Our local nonprofits, like the Smith County Help Center, the Emmanuel House, the Backpack Program, Smith County Drug Prevention Coalition, I do want to speak on their behalf tonight, they couldn't be here, Youth and Family Resource Network, Habitat for Humanity, and all the others count on the town of Carthage as a vital partner in this system of care. A lot of communities, very few communities and counties, have the system of care that we have in place to serve. When people come to the Emmanuel House or to the Help Center, they're amazed at what our community has, and it's all because we have so many caring people that want to see those people that need help get the help they need. We are blessed with these support services in ways that other counties are not. The Smith County Library provides education and assistance, and they give Wi-Fi for citizens so they can access food if needed, or shelter, or employment. The Chamber brings a multitude of programs and services and grants to support our citizens. The Senior Center provides meals, health, education, and social opportunities for many Carthage seniors. These agencies, they do support the entire county, but definitely mainly Carthage. They bring thousands of dollars in grants to the town of Carthage, they work hard with fundraisers to continue these life-saving services throughout COVID pandemic, and now are facing rising costs of food and shelter. The town of Carthage has recognized this obligation over many years, more years than I've been on the council, and has partnered with these agencies to be a part of this system of care that is a foundation for the future health of our youth and families in Carthage. The future health of our families requires that we continue this vital support, and it's a very small amount of our budget that goes out to our wonderful nonprofits, and if they're like me, they work a lot of hours, they don't get paid for, they volunteer a lot of hours that they don't get paid. I don't have a retirement plan, I've always worked for nonprofits, and they never have retirement plans or insurance or any of those things, but we do it because we want to serve the people and the community, and we need the town of Carthage to partner with us.
You tell us your names and where you live, and who you represent, please.
You want to go first?
I'm Destiny, and I live at the Emmanuel House, and this is Bentley.
He's tiny, but he's mighty, so watch out. I'm Reverend Monica Mady, I'm the pastor at Carthage United Methodist Church, as well as the president of the board at the Emmanuel House. I've been with the Emmanuel House since before we started four years ago, and first of all, I want to start by thanking you for the years that you have supported us since we reopened three years ago, we started working on that four years ago, and some of you have been instrumental in helping us, Jessie, Barbara, Cole, Sam, a bunch of you, Mary Smith. I want to share something that Destiny said when I was explaining to the women of the house why we were coming and invited any of them that wanted to come, some of them had to work and had things, so, and it rained, so, you know, there's that, but she said, oh, no, I go to the meeting for spots, and I get help with the baby, I get things for the baby from the Pregnancy Help Center, and, you know, the Drug Coalition has always been helpful, and I'm sure that once she's here a little bit longer, she'll work her way through other agencies. But I want to point something out that some people don't know, the women at the Emmanuel House, we are not a shelter, we are different, they are residents, they work in this community, they shop in this community, some of them are registered voters for this community, when they buy things, they pay taxes to this community, they are not in a shelter where everything is handed to them, they pay rent, and to live in this house and to learn how to live life better. Once upon a time, we were a shelter, but we're not anymore, that's changed three years ago. What we do with the money that you give us is, we don't, we don't give them a place to live, they pay for that, they pay for the program, but we use it to tap into other resources like trauma and for counseling, so we can break a cycle, or other counselors, mental health care, classes, trainings, things that they need, so that when they leave the Emmanuel House, and Destiny was, it's funny, she was convincing a new resident of exactly what I'm saying right now, when you leave the Emmanuel House, you won't have to go back to the way you lived before you came, and that's the whole point, and these are, many of them are, some of them, not many, but some of them stay here and lead productive lives from then on. We have several that work in this community and rent homes in this community and live here because of the work that they did at the Emmanuel House. And in case you were wondering, two of our residents are women to Smith Countyans, they were born and raised here, we've got another one that came here as a little kid and lived here until she ended up in prison. So it's not like these people are foreigners to you, they are residents of your place. And I just want to point something else out, this may seem like a lot of money for you, and it is desperately a lot of money for us, because we live completely on donations and small grants, and we do that on purpose for a reason. We do not want to partner with a big agency, because then we can't do things the way that we need to do them, that we have somebody else telling us what to do. And I think, Destiny, what do you think about our program compared to others?
I think it's just the right amount of balance and love and support from the community, I mean, it's not really a residential setting, I mean, they make you feel comfortable, make you feel like you have a home.
And we do it, we couldn't do it that way if we partnered with an agency, but in order to do it that way, we have to have these donations. And I want you to kind of, if you have a pen, write down a number, .0007, three zeros and a seven, after a decimal point, that's how much of a percentage what you give us is of your entire budget. What you give us is a seven hundredth of one percent of the city's budget. To you guys, it's negligible, but to us, it's life-changing, and so we're just hoping that you continue to keep us in your budget, because we serve this community in many ways by serving these women. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but other than that, that's all I want to say.
Thank you. I think it was next, and then we'll go. Okay. Your name, where you live, and who you represent, please.
My name is Andy Reed, I'm representing the Smith County Heritage Museum, I'm the vice president of the Board of Directors, and I'd like to discuss and bring a proposal to your organization about the assistance and communication and camaraderie and joint effort that we have had with the city of Carthage. And let me read, and I provided you with some paperwork also, but let me read this piece of, this piece of paper. It says, "To the Carthage City Council members, the board members of the Smith County Heritage Museum wishes to thank you all for the support that has been given in the past couple of years. The donations have been very much appreciated. We hope you will reconsider your decision of making monetary donations to community resources such as ours. The Smith County Heritage Museum serves the citizens of Carthage and the county. We provide free admission to all guests, we participate in Carthage events such as William Walton Day, Hometown Christmas, and the Carthage Christmas Parades, and the Gordsville Christmas Parade. We provide tours for elementary, middle school, and high school students and other civic groups, we're preserving items and information pertaining to the history of Carthage. The prestige of having the county's history preserved in Carthage, the county seek in providing a learning experience not only for the students of Carthage, but all of Smith County, should be an honor and a way to serve citizens." Okay, one more piece of information here. Okay, this was a letter written to the Carthage, town of Carthage, on July 24th of 2021. It says, "Dear Mrs. Davenport, as you requested, we are enclosing a tax preparation sheet for 2020. Hopefully, this is the information you are needing. The Smith County Heritage Museum serves the citizens of Smith County," and pretty much what I said before, "and we provide free admission to all guests, we have been promoting the reprinting of the Smith County History Book, we're participating in the Walton Day, Veterans Day, and the Hometown, and the Christmas Parades and all, provide tours for school groups and other groups, and we're preserving the items of Smith County. Thank you for your considering us for a contribution to our organization. At the museum, we have, I feel like we have a really good rapport with the town of Carthage. The Carthage has always stepped up, whenever we've needed something, the town of Carthage has always stepped up and helped us with it, as far as I know, has always helped with it, and I think we're maintaining a really good balance with the town of Carthage. I don't, we're, we're doing everything we can to raise as many funds, have as many fundraisers, and provide as much... provide as much on our own as we possibly can to take some of the burden off of the town of Carthage at all times. And I just want to, I just want to ask that we continue to be in the loop, per se, for donations if they arise, and to maintain what we have already, maintain our already status with the building that we're in and the assistance that we've been receiving. And I sure appreciate it, but let me say that.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
I'm trying not to be emotional. This day, I dated Bass with the Smith County Habitat, and also the Boy Scouts. I just sit there, remember, we need to ask for your help in the Scouts, too. But this is sort of like piling on tonight. But you know what we're here for, and you know why we need it. You are a better community because you have these civic organizations in your community. There's no question about that. Nobody could argue that question. And it's such a small amount. The $1,000 you give Habitat, Morse back into the county, the city coffers have over $4,000 in property taxes, probably more than that now that the appraisal's gone up. So the reality is, we need your money. Habitat needs your money. The Scouts need your money. All these organizations that have been here tonight need your money. It's a fairly small amount, as somebody, Monica said just a few minutes ago, it's just a, if it's nothing more than just a token amount that says, "Hey, we're partners with you. This is a collaborative effort. We need you to help to keep this functioning because we're all trying to make this community better." We've got 11 Habitat houses in the community of property that would not otherwise be taxable had it not been for an organization like Habitat. So I just implore you to take a closer look at that and don't dissolve that type of financial partnership, which means so much to these organizations, but in the grand scheme of things, not a huge amount to it. And it's good, it's good government, it's good business, it's good sense. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is anyone else here just big citizens concerned? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to add something before these. Your dad was very instrumental in getting the Boy Scouts going in his area, too. Very appreciative.
One of the first scout masters, yeah. Okay, thank you. Greta?
Hi, I'm Greta Kirby. I'm one of the county commissioners. I was sent here tonight on behalf of the Smith County senior citizens. Jan Johnson, the director, apologizes because right now she is in southern Texas on a senior citizens' trip with a big bunch of senior citizens on a big bus. And so she apologizes, but this is actually also a fundraiser for Smith County senior citizens. It is not a vacation. She goes, part of the proceeds of these trips go back to senior citizens. Now, the reason I'm here tonight is because I understand you guys cut your budget, and you took $1,500 away from Smith County senior citizens. And I just want to reiterate what this money goes for. The Smith County senior citizen currently provides food and delivery using Euclid for transportation to 60 citizens right now that are living in the city of Carthage. So this is not just a county thing. It is city, and it is also county. All of you know, if you've been to the grocery store lately, you know what we're dealing with. Food prices have absolutely gone out the ceiling. And so it's made it very difficult for senior citizens to provide the food to people who need it in their community. And let me tell you, I'm a volunteer at senior citizens. I know what goes on there. I do education programs, I do music, anything that they're asking me to do, I try my best to step in and do. We don't get paid. They have two paid people at the center, and that is the director and one helper, and the rest of us are totally free labor that we willingly put in to make the senior citizen comply with everything and to help the citizens of the city and the county. So I would ask you, please reconsider this. It's only $1,500. It's not like we're asking for $100,000. It's $1,500 just to provide food to your citizens here in the city to help them with their food budgets because they're hurting. Now, I brought all of you tonight. This is a calendar and a schedule of exactly what senior citizens is active in and what we're doing right now. And so you're going to see volunteer names on here, you're going to see education programs, you're going to see many different things that we do for the community. And this includes the city of Carthage. And I want to hand all of you a copy of this. By the way, anytime the doors of the Citizen Senior Center are open from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 right now, the hours were changed because of COVID, and they were pulled back a little bit. Anytime you want to come by and see what goes on over there, to participate, to contribute in any way, the door is always open to senior citizens to do just that. Thank you very much. And here's a little pamphlet I'll leave if anybody wants to look at that a little more.
Okay, thank you.
And mayor, I want to speak on behalf of two nonprofits. Unless there's something you have to say.
I want to bring up something about this. I want to point out, and then I'll make it quick. For $1,500, and we're supplying meals to 60 residents of Carthage, that's $25 a year. So think about that.
Okay. I believe they have another here, is that correct? Your name, where you live, and your organization, please.
Hi, I'm Shanaya Pelham. I'm the president at Smith County Humane, and I am a county resident, not a city resident. However, we do, we do base Smith County Humane here in the city of Carthage. We do not have a physical location yet. We are working on that as we speak. For the last two years that I'm aware of, the city of Carthage has chosen to give us $1,500 as a charitable contribution. We have been very appreciative of that. We serve this city and the residents to respond to animal calls when our animal control is not available here in the city. We address the feral cat situations that we have that our animal control does not have the time or the manpower to take on. I will say that just recently, in the last six weeks, we picked up two cats, one on Mole and, or Hole Avenue, or Mole or Hole, sorry, and one on Jackson Avenue. And those two cats alone cost $1,749 and $1,749 and some change. We actually did a fundraiser to pay for some of that, but some of the $1,500 this year went to those two particular situations. That is a fraction of what we spend on the animals and situations here in the city of Carthage. We are going to continue to do that regardless of the $1,500 contribution or not. For my volunteers and my organization, you guys are the only entity governmental-wise that has actually said, "Hey, we will put some skin in this game. We will help you." And we have made that known in every press release, every media interview, that the city of Carthage has been the one governmental organization, entity within the county of Smith County who has said, "These are vital services to our county." As every nonprofit here has said, and I echo what they say, the services that are needed in this county, in the city, in the other municipalities, is something that our governments are small as a whole. Our tax base is a lot lower than, say, Mount Juliet or Wilson County, where they can provide more services. The nonprofits that are volunteering their time on a daily basis in this county, in this city, directly impacting the lives of the residents in the city and the county as a whole, mostly on their own free dime, or their free time and their own dime in some cases, are vital to expanding and offering the much-needed vital services that this city needs. And personally, you know, I am thankful 100% for the $1,500 that we have received from you guys. I hope that continues. If it doesn't, then I would think that the nonprofits who are serving the city and providing the services to the city and doing that job for the city, well, maybe there could be contractual agreements. You know, maybe the rescue squad has to charge so much to shut the roads down, and it makes us taxpayers more money. We get the $1,500. We don't send a bill to the city for extra services needed. We don't ask for reimbursements for a situation that costs us more than that $1,500. We take it, we say thank you, we make sure that taxpayers' money is used exactly for what it's intended to be used for, and we do the best we can with it. And then we get out and we hustle the rest. So I ask you to reconsider. It is a very small fraction of the overall budget, and it is vital. Some organizations need it a lot more than others, but we all need it, especially at a time when donations are down overall. People are struggling, people on the verge of evictions, they don't have a lot of extra to donate. And if we're not, then give it back to the taxpayers. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Anyone else here that wants to speak to?
I do have two organizations, The Spot and the Drug Coalition, that I want to speak really briefly about, just so that if there's somebody here that doesn't know what they do. The town of Carthage has supported these, both of these nonprofits for many, many years. Well, I'll just read you my letter to the city. The town of Carthage has been a valuable partner to Youth and Family Resource for more than 20 years, as we serve youth and families together. Youth and Family Resource Center here in Carthage is an organization that combines healthy relationships with creative programs to help junior and senior high teens make good choices, establish a solid foundation for life, and positively impact their schools and their community. Contributions by community partners allow us to offer mentoring, prevention programs, in a safe after-school environment, and this is needed as many parents are not at home when students have left school. And risky behaviors, a lot of times, take place during that time. We support youth through after-school activities, summer camps. We're taking 22 students to camp at New Frontiers this weekend, and we talk about poverty prevention, we talk about avoiding risky behaviors, we talk about avoiding substance use. We actually take them through a life maze this weekend where officers are going to come up, and they're going to have a scenario that sometimes teenagers make those bad decisions. And then they're going to have to go before the judge, they're going to have to go before the principal at the school, they're going to have to go before their parents. So they go from station to station. Jessie's helped us out with this before. It's a great program to let teenagers know, "We've got to make good choices because these are the consequences." So we have three of those camps planned for this summer. So summer camps, prevention education in the schools. I was in one of the schools in Carthage all day today, teaching about prevention and making healthy choices. We're also in partnership with the juvenile court system. I did a class this evening. I do one every Thursday. This is at no cost to the parents, no cost to the senior county. Every Thursday, kids that have been in juvenile court come to The Spot, and they do an eight-week class on how can we get them back on track so that they're not going to end up being adult offenders? So that's really our goal. We provide transportation and often connect families to needed resources, especially for at-risk youth. All activities are provided with a positive youth development, and again, we talked about trauma-informed care approach. It's our goal to help build developmental assets that teenagers need to succeed, and sometimes we all just have to face it, sometimes they're missing, they're just not there. We have five part-time staff members that mentor and facilitate the program, a lot of volunteers. We have a gentleman that's retired that comes and cooks meals. We provide meals at no cost for these kids that come after school. Our mentors are certified in our Real Life Essentials curriculum, and we also have oversight by our local Board of Directors. So we humbly request your contribution to continue these services at no cost to students, families, or the community. So that's a little bit about what The Spot, is what the kids call it. You guys know where it is? It's just up the street. This tells you what we do each afternoon. We have a different group of kids. So we're in the schools, we're working in the court system, and we have the after-school program. And I'll finish about that, that our nonprofit, with our vision. We want to see families with the assets they need to thrive as positive contributing members of their community, and we know that's going to take us all working together with the families that are especially struggling with substance use. And our mission is to create a culture that inspires families to embrace healthy relationships, discover their purpose, and influence others through positive action. And we do this by providing safe, stable, and nurturing care, sensitive care, and encouraging relationships. And you guys also know what the Drug Prevention Coalition does, and they sent me their letter, and you guys have all that. I won't read all that because it's a long letter, and it tells a lot about what they do in the community. They really serve our community, they support our law enforcement, they do free Narcan training, and they provide free Narcan that saves lives, and we know that we have a lot of overdose deaths going on right now. So I can't say enough about what the Drug Prevention Coalition does. I helped us start it about 11 years ago. I retired from that last year. Running two nonprofits was a little bit too much for me to do, and I wanted to work with the kids, but they have, Tammy London is now the director. She's wonderful, doing great things in our community. They're in the schools all the time. They're doing drug take-back days. They just did that, where they took in, all across the state of Tennessee, taking in those medications that are in somebody's medicine cabinet that could be abused or could be, cause overdoses or accidental overdoses. So they do so much in the community, and I'll let you read that letter because I know we have a long meeting ahead of us. I'm just going to read you the last sentence. "The data we receive can seem overwhelming to overcome because we know what's happening in our community and in our jails. I was on the county commission, and we had to build a new jail. So I know what it costs to build a new jail. I'd rather build new roads, new playgrounds, and about 90% of the people that are in that jail have to do with substance abuse. We need this coalition here. We have one of the best coalitions in the state. We're funded by the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services, and they will tell you we have one of the strongest coalitions in the state, and we literally have brought millions into the county in funding." So just consider those as you make the decision about the budget. I know we need to be frugal. I'm probably one of the most frugal people, but I also believe in giving and serving those that need us.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, then we will thank you, everybody who spoke. We will move on through our business. To the mayor's report, so I get to speak for a second. I'm right here. I just want to reiterate a few of the things that have happened since our last meeting that are really great in this community, and a lot of good things are happening. We had a spring market fest at City Pool and the park. It was freezing, but we had a really good turnout. I had food vendors, we had a wonderful Iron Skillet group that comes all around. They're coming back to the one in the fall. Had a great classic car drive-in, and we're going to have another one Saturday, September 24th. So please put that on your calendar if you have anyone who wants to come out and be a vendor or bring in a classic car. We're going to do that again. It was wonderful. I had a fun day just a while back. We had a thing called Mayor for a Day here. We have the girls' state and boys' state delegates that American Legion, Post 57, right here, sponsors, and we really appreciate it. Back when I, in my day, there was only one girl, and I went, boy, they have 12 of these now. It's amazing. So they all came here for two hours, talked about local government, they passed pretend ordinances, they did campaign speeches for whatever they want to run for, rural, state, and boys' state. I tell you, if these are indicators of our future, we're in good hands. These are fantastic young ladies, and men. We had a great Army veteran, Eric Horton, that came through Carthage, stopped on his ride through Tennessee to give support for veterans who are looking for jobs, to increase their awareness. The poor guy left from here and rode straight uphill to Cookeville the next day. Pretty amazing to me. Last Saturday, we had a great screening of a documentary that was right here in Carthage. We expected 30 people, we had 150 people that showed up for this from all over, from Nashville, Knoxville, Cookeville, you name it, they came in to follow this particular filmmaker from Nashville and also to support this local Carthage House of Beauty. So it was a wonderful evening, and we had a great bluegrass local band. So it was a wonderful evening, and we had a great bluegrass local band.
That bluegrass thing was pretty cool.
Yeah, they were great. Terry Shane Delahay and Diana and her friends, their friends, it was a great five-piece band. Really had a great time. T-ball season is going, it's amazing to go down, if you haven't had a chance, go down and watch those little kids, it's fantastic. I mean, I just, if you want to get an uplift to your life, just go watch these little T-ball players, they're fantastic, they're little kids, and they hit those balls and run, and they love that place. Our pool opens Saturday, May 24th, so tell all your family and friends, we are going to have the aerobics classes again this year. Those times are going to be, are posted on our website, which is townofcarthage.tn.com, there's a lot of good things on there. So, just good things happening here in town, and we appreciate everything everybody does. Next report, city reporter.
I don't have anything official at this time unless you guys have questions.
Okay, thank you. Chief Davis, our police report.
Nothing to report, you have a mumpy report right there. If you don't have any questions, you'll be glad to answer this one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works, Leslie.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Water and Sewer, Derek, do you have?
I don't have anything to report, just an update, they are moving along pretty well on the Futuro Alley water line, so hopefully in the next two or three weeks that'll be complete.
Okay. And a little bit later, Mr. Jones is going to come by phone, he was wanting to be here to report on some of this stuff.
Derek, if you don't, they've done a great job on that. They've minimized, like, all kinds of messes, like, I was, I've been very, I watch it every single day, but they've done a good job, I just want to let you know that.
The water plant, Rusty?
Everything's running normal, no formal report, but, you know, I don't want to be like a broken record and stand up here and tell y'all we never have anything to say, so if there's anything y'all want to know, let me know what you want reported, I'd be glad to give it to you. Because a lot of times, you know, nothing to report is a good thing, usually, so. But if y'all need any specific detail, just let me know, I'll be glad to give it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Waste Water Plant, Steve?
I have anything to report, business as usual. If y'all got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Thank you for what you do for us, appreciate you.
Thank you. Chief Hyte, for the fire department?
Yes, ma'am, have a little report, everything else, we're just waiting to see what.
They're moving along with the new extension on the bay?
Till the last couple of days. We're open next week, that moves a little faster.
Okay.
Grant, we're still working on that thing.
Evan's supposed to be here. Okay, thank you.
Evan was here, did he leave?
Is Evan out there?
He is.
Oh, that's okay, I just didn't know he was here. Okay, no, that's okay, not yet. Not yet, not yet, I'm sorry, I just didn't know you were here, just a second. Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. One more. So we have our CFOs, Scott, if you'd like to make a wish.
I guess no one anymore. Okay, everybody has a copy of the finance report, just kind of reiterate, we are still very solvent in the general fund, the payables up because of the fire hall, which that'll come up in just a little bit, but that's why that ratio went down a little bit, but we're very solvent in general fund. Water and sewer funds, still very solvent, we've got some bills continuing to roll in on the projects that are going forward, still in good shape as far as our debt service, and it was good there. Did want to highlight just a few things, item number four on my report about the American Rescue Plan grants. We did submit our plan to Horn LLP, which was a subcontract by the comptroller's office to review municipal plans for using those funds, and they approved the plan that you folks put into place. We didn't have to do that, but we wanted to do that, and so we were good there. Subsequent to all that, federal treasury came out and said, all municipalities, non-entitlement units that can take a standard deduction of a $10 million or less revenue reduction, that all you got to do is report that, and then you can use those funds for local government services, which translates into you can use it for anything. We've already submitted our report. I questioned about that and said, we didn't have a revenue reduction, and they came back and said, it's okay, take the standard deduction. And so I have that correspondence. I think it's a way to limit the amount of extra work that the federal government's going to have to do to check on this, and we were well below that threshold, so some of the council would ask, can we use those funds for other things? The answer to that is yes, you may. My recommendation is we continue with our plan and use it for water sewer infrastructure projects. One of the items that came up was, we had a couple of smaller special revenue fund accounts that were not receiving interest, and we finally gotten that taken care of. You'll see the whopping 67 cents that we earned on those two, but it's, the point was what my concern was. And then, I just wanted to highlight on page 20, right now, the loans that we have in place for state revolving fund is almost $1.7 billion, and I reiterate, as you think about future projects, the most that I think we can need to borrow based on current debt loads would be around one and a half, $2 million. The rest of water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure will have to come from federal and state grants. So, that's the report that I have. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to entertain those this time. As far as the budget part, we're in good shape, 17%, it's about, anything less than that is something to look at, but overall, we're in really good shape as far as the budget. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, now Evan, if you will, please. We have several grants that we're doing and projects, and Evan, if you don't mind coming in, give us a little overview of some of these, and then later on, we have the change order on the budget.
Yes, I got the revised agenda, so. The only one we're dealing with is the park, so they've come down there and patched the area that was not draining. I guess I could find out tonight when I drive by, because it hadn't rained since then, but it poured on me all the way down here, so I could check and make sure that that's, there's very minor grading down there that needs to be done, right, we've done some of the paving area. Right now, David's on y'all's Futuro Alley, so he'll get down there and do it, but he's working on that alley, so that's kind of what we got there. And there are some possible items on doing some plantings and stuff down there, too, so that's kind of where we're at, ready for an inspection from the state, pretty much.
And I think the fire hall's on later, end of the day?
Yeah, I mean, I can just give them an update, they're waiting on doors on the fire hall, they're having trouble, I mean, materials hard to get right now, and they're supposed to be getting some of those, so.
There's going to be a connecting door on the inside of it as well?
That whole wall comes down.
That whole wall will come down?
Yes, that, right now, it's just temporary.
Okay.
Like, trying to keep people from getting in there, it's security for now.
Security for now.
But yes, that wall is to be removed.
Okay.
Inside. And the block wall, there's a section coming out of it, so.
Okay.
It'll look a little different, yes, it's just for security purposes right now.
Thank you. Very good. Again, I mentioned the CDVG when I was talking. You did not. Oh, let me go back to one more part of my report. Our CDVG, because this reminded me, for the fire engine, of course, we got it, the contract was signed by us and then sent back, they have signed it, so we are moving forward with that, and now, I believe, Chief, you've got 90 days to put together your scope for the engine. Oh, that's okay, but we are moving forward with that, CDVG.
I'm sorry?
I was just saying, we are moving forward with the CDVG, that reminded me of it, but...
Yes, we are working right now on specifics for the grant.
Right, okay.
That's what it's been all day on today.
Good deal, yes.
What's the match on that, again?
We have three, gosh, I don't remember this exact match.
$296,024 less.
In our matches.
About $3,000 from the...
That's their, that's what we're getting.
We have $60,000 allocated.
Wow, that's great.
It is.
That's great.
Darn good. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I forgot that in my report. Now, Mr. Jones is going to come in on the phone, but then we also have the water line recommendation at the end, so he said he would wait till that to give the full report of what he's doing, if that's okay with everybody. All right, let's go into unfinished business, so we have, put my glasses on here, the previous special permits, Councilman Evil, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think what we're waiting on was just where it was going to be at, and it looks like they put on it Ward II on the Back to School Bash in our Hometown Halloween, it was Main Street and Third Street, so I was just going to motion that we go ahead and accept this application for a special event permit.
Oh, sir.
Okay.
Is there discussion on this?
Yes, that wasn't, we were waiting on them, they said they were going to contact all the businesses because of length of closure, remember?
That's right, that's right. Did we get any information back on that?
Not us, no. So this first one was all day, is it, what day is it?
It's like 3 to 10, or 7.
They're both 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Oh, yeah, is that a...
Yeah, we were waiting on that.
Is that the business day, too?
I mean, what, when is this, July? I mean, we could table this just to, I mean, what do y'all, do you want to ask them for something specifically, or, I mean, I don't...
July 10th is a Saturday. What is it again, it's for the children, bouncy houses?
July 30th. Back to School Bash and the Hometown Halloween.
Yeah, so July 30th, so that's still a ways away, and then October 31st, Halloween.
And I believe that there's some probably discrepancies on the Back to School Bash on whether the roads are going to be closed or not, because there's been some discussions in their committee themselves.
Okay.
I mean, I'd...
Would you like to table these so we can get more information?
Maybe we should table it and let them come to the next meeting and explain what's going on.
Yeah, let's, can you, do you mind inviting them to the next meeting, that way they can just share what they've got? Okay, so I'm going to withdraw my motion, so, and we'll put up the agenda next meeting, if you don't mind, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then next is Councilman Babcock, donations and public funds to nonprofit organizations.
I'm not exactly sure how my name got put on that, but I'm good with that.
Same with mine, I didn't know what I was talking about either.
Well, you did motion to bring these back.
Oh, okay, so that's why.
But on this one, there was only three of us at the budget meeting, and we talked about bringing it up today so that all of us could discuss the public funds, donations. My biggest concern is with Scott, whether the MISA TCA code, as far as that we have to require to follow by law, all these donations meet that, because if they don't meet that, we can't do it. And also, I've had a couple of people tell me that, you know, they'd rather donate their money to who they want to donate it to instead of having the city donate for them, so that's why we're here.
Is you have a motion to... Yeah, can we move, motion to...
Motion discussion.
Yeah, motion to...
I'd like to make a motion, we put the funds back in, and if we get a second, we can discuss that.
Okay, we have a motion and second to put...
Put the funds, the donation funds...
The previous funds back in.
To keep contributions.
To keep the contributions in there. I just felt like maybe we didn't know what they bring to the city, so I wanted everybody to understand, we make a lot more money off from that than we ever give out to them, so I make that motion, and we have a session.
And just for clarification, some have turned in the paperwork, some haven't, is that correct, or?
Everyone has turned in the required paperwork, with the exception of the Habitat for Humanity, which we have requested, and they'll get it to us dispersed, that's the only one we have dispersed.
So discussion, I think, this first, yes?
So, I'm a proponent, obviously, of, I mean, several that stood up and said that I helped them or I donated and that kind of thing, but I'm definitely a big proponent of organizations being charitable, what they bring to the city, no doubt, there's no debating that. My issue with it is, I don't, fundamentally, I don't believe, and I've talked to several people that don't believe, that it is the government's job to do the charitable giving for the citizens, I think, and again, I'll speak for myself, I don't believe, I'll put it this way, I believe that if organizations are, one, making a difference in the community, and, two, the people know about those organizations, they're doing the proper marketing and things like that, then the people in the community will take care of those organizations, will donate their funds to it. I just, I don't think it is the government's job to force the citizens to spend their tax dollars on these organizations that they may or may not agree with.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
And I'm going to, I'm really torn on this issue, I'll be honest with you. A lot of people showed up that I really highly respect, and I've always taken the stance that Jesse has, is it's not the government's job. And I'm also trying to listen to the constituents here, and, I mean, there's a lot of value in, I mean, several of those organizations, and some of them, you could maybe argue that it offsets taxes, and some of them you can't, some of them you definitely could, and I think that there's places for where we can see these definitely offset like a service. I mean, you take, like, the rescue squad, for example, and we can, I mean, if you, my first question was, would it be appropriate to suspend Robert's rules so we can just kind of have a quick discussion on it?
Sure, and it might be appropriate to read, do you want to read so everybody's clarified? Scott, do you have it with the comptroller?
Yeah, but I did want to finish my thought, too.
I think we all looked at the code, it says that they need to benefit the Town of Carthage, and definitely all these do, not only the Town of Carthage, it does, we can be a community nonprofit but still benefit the Town of Carthage, and they do, and this has happened for 30 years, I mean, it's...
But I was going to finish, too, I just would definitely love for us all to discuss, is what I meant.
Sure.
But also, these organizations do count on this, and so I'm kind of like, I feel like maybe we could have a wiggle room, kind of a negotiation on this, where this year, we say, let's move forward and let's do this, but we let these organizations know that, hey, next year, we're going to be revamping this, and you may not get in.
Are we going to have a discussion, or is this...
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me make a quick motion to...
I mean, we have a discussion, anyway, this is a discussion.
But I was here to jump into, it's, I'm just saying, like, maybe to give them a chance to structure their finances because they're used to it, and again, like, I'm just trying, I've always, I mean, you've seen my votes, I've always been, I've always voted against the contributions, but also, got to listen to this today, and people showed up, and they did show up, and I listened, and...
Well, there's no doubt that everyone that showed up today is an asset to the city.
Yeah.
No one can argue that, I can't argue that.
No.
Like I said, I wouldn't put the rescue squad in the same category as that because they provide a direct benefit.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
In services, they're different than a charitable organization.
And that's what I, that's where I'm putting it, though, is how we can, we need to have official categorization, whether it's this budget or the next budget.
Right.
But I wanted to, like, I'm just, I'm listening again today, and rarely do I get my heartstrings tugged, I'm pretty, stay with it, but I mean, they got tugged a little bit, and it's kind of like, maybe it's just like, hey, we want to fund you all this year, but next year, we are going to be revamping this, we've got a plan, you know, there's Class A, Class B, Class C organizations, this is how you get in on it, but again, at the end of the day, too, fundamentally, I do not feel that it is the government's job to fund a lot of these organizations, fundamentally, I don't, but I think that there's room for negotiation here, so that's my thoughts.
And I've got a question, Scott, do all these organizations that requested money meet that TCA code requirement?
Everyone meets the TCA requirement. We have a folder where they have given us documents that carry over between fiscal years. The exception that I have for this fiscal year is the Habitat of Humanity, or for Humanity, but they'll, it'll come, and then when we get it, we'll distribute those funds. May I offer a suggestion?
Go right ahead.
It may be, at some point in time, the council may decide, if we're going to do this, that we're going to say, it'll be 1% or 2% or whatever it is, right now, it's about 1% or less of the total budget for all of them, okay? You might say, okay, we're going to have a certain dollar amount that we'll allocate for this purpose, and then you have a subcommittee that decides, people apply, we have a form outpatient process, they apply, and then the council can rate them and decide if you want to do, and that way you don't go over a certain amount. That's one approach to it, there's many others, but I think the biggest concern you might have is...
I like that idea because we could get 50 more... I, I like that idea, because then, could we get 50 more organizations in tomorrow?
Bill, did you?
Yes, I do. Going along with what you said about the, you know, categorizing, yeah, because I tried to write down what we had given in the past. Some of them seem quite low, as compared to some of the rest of them, so that's why I'm saying we need to talk about that, because some are not getting what I think they should get, but that's my-
Maybe readjust some donations in different directions.
So to piggyback off of what Scott said, maybe we do two, we do two caps. We do a cap per organization, and we also do a cap total, like, let's say it's 1% a total cap. Again, this would be organizing it in a way that, you know, the council can say, we do believe that this category is, is, you know, Rescue Squad category, and this category is a huge service, but it's not necessarily like government responsibility. Does that, does that make sense? So it's not, I'm not, I, I think that there's some room to negotiate, it's not, I don't think it's necessarily an all or nothing, where I feel like in the past, I've approached it as an all or nothing. And just listening to that, and then talking with Scott, I've, I've been like, well, I, it's kinda tough to be all or nothing.
I like the idea of putting a cap on it, and maybe going through and analyzing each organization, saying, okay, this is the benefit that we receive from this organization, these are, like, the Senior Center, they're helping 60 people in, in our community eat. I mean, it's hard to say, no, we're gonna give you money.
It's hard to say no to that.
Yes.
But there comes a time when we have to put a top on it, and-
I think a cap is a good idea.
And I hate to disagree, just 'cause we did, done it for 30 years, doesn't mean we have to continue.
No, but we do wanna honor what those people saw in these entities, and what they did, because they, they were making good decisions too.
I agree. I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, just because we did it yesterday, doesn't mean we have to do it tomorrow.
I, I agree, I'm a proponent of that really.
That's where I'm with you on, like, if they, they've kinda been depending on it, so maybe, like, saying, like, we're making a stand right here, says, hey, listen, we understand, you've been defending, but depending on this, this year, we're gonna roll forward as normal, but we're gonna be restructuring this next year, so please know that your budget can be affected next year.
Y'all need to keep in mind that what we're donating to all those organizations is token. It's not, they're not depending on us.
They're not supporting.
I mean, we're not supporting them, but we're just helping a little bit.
Yeah.
And they ever want to give back to this community, and I think we need to continue to.
Yeah, and, and, but, I mean, that money does go a long way for them. I mean, it, I mean, it's-
It really does.
It really does go a long way, so we also can't take that into, I mean, it is, you're right, but also, I, I know how they spend money, it's, they're pretty frugal.
Bill, then Jesse, please.
I have to say that I'm very impressed by the, the people that showed up tonight and, and spoke about this, because I don't recall this happening in the past.
It hasn't.
It hasn't for a while, but we used to do it. I did it 20 years ago.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm glad they came, I'm really happy. I think it changed a lot of people's opinions about it, that we got it out in the open, we got to talk about it. Like I said, I think some of them are quite low, compared to some of the rest of them, but we can work on that next time.
Jesse, and then-
Jesse, it's-
So, uh, the only point I'd add to it, um, it, it does, we're, we're kinda putting a lot on it, as Councilman Evil said, it goes a long way, it does. But I think we've gotta also have in our minds that, um, it's not, we give to them, or they disappear.
Yeah.
We give to them, and they, or they just go away. And we do that with a lot of things that we do in here. If we don't do that, then it's just not gonna happen, this event's not gonna happen, or they're not gonna have, you know, an organization. And I, I really believe in that the community will rally around these organizations whenever they do lose funding, if they do, from government entities. I really believe that people will step up and do that, and they may make more than they did for-
Well, they may after just tonight, but-
And they, they may very well.
I think the biggest thing is, not only did we get an education, the people that were watching got an education.
That needs to happen, because I will say, promoting your nonprofit, when you are knee-deep in just taking care of kids, is difficult.
Yeah, and you look at the one thing about, Mr. Carter came in, talked about the Senate Roadblocks, yet he's on the list to get donations, and that, I think it was quite, there, there shows you what they're doing for our community, and we should not delay.
That's a joke.
Scott, we're-
We should probably be giving them more.
Uh, just so I know, what you want me to adjust for the second reading? Um, in the first budget workshop, we retained the Chamber at 9,000, we retained Smith County Library at 6,000, and then we divided the rest equally at 1,200 each. So some would get more, and some will get less, and there was only one new item, and that was wagons.
I would like to see-
But I would say the Boy Scouts did not meet the criteria last year, and they were not on this year's, because it goes to the Middle Tennessee Council, and they could not tell us exactly how it benefited the town of Carthage residents. It's not necessarily allocated to the local chapter of the Boy Scouts.
Yes, sir.
Cool. I was gonna just say, I, I 100% agree with what Jesse was saying, like, we're bringing attention to it, and, and hopefully, that's, I, I do believe it is the community's responsibility to step up and fund these organizations, 100%, and maybe we can just be, again, just a, one time, middle, middle of the road here, meet them, say, hey, but we do want the community to step up, and that includes us, you know, in our private lives, too, what we have, too. I mean, not, everybody has something different, but, you know, showing that action ourselves, too, I think would go a long way.
Did you say that the Chamber gets 9,000, the Library gets 6, and everybody else gets 1,200?
That's what we added in the first workshop.
I think we need to go back to, at least, the Rescue Squad getting at least 2,000, I mean, that's-
My motion was that we keep them as the same as last year. That motion is on the floor, and the second is to keep them the same as last year, and then we talked this entire year about how we wanna restructure it next year, and that sounded like what you were saying.
Yeah, 'cause that was all broken down, every, just everybody getting 1,200 even, except for the Chamber and the-
That was the first budget workshop, or second budget workshop, we took all off except for the Chamber, okay, and gave you the talk about that. And you'll see in the budget, we need to clearly distinguish between 501(c)(3) charitable organizations versus-
501(c).
The four and the six civic organizations, which support indirect support of the infrastructure of the town, of the tax base, and all of those.
And it creates jobs, too, is-
Right, the jobs, and all that. So those need to be thought of as a separate.
I mean, that's a criteria.
But, it makes it, the only question I have is, if you, we can say, go back to what we did, this current fiscal year, the exception is, I need to know what to do about wagons.
What were they requesting?
What'd they request?
Uh, well, I don't remember exactly, but we had like 1,200.
I can amend my motion.
No, I think you said it right, go back to the-
Well, but we need to add that, if we decide to add that, or if we wanna vote on that separately, I don't care.
Final thoughts, uh, I think, um, I, I like the idea to give them the opportunity to have time, spring that on them, you know, in two months, you're not gonna have any funding, is not fair. Um, so I, I back off of that. I do think, and I agree with Councilman Evil, next year, we need to have a serious discussion about, um, what we're gonna do, and whether or not we're going to, it has nothing to do with the organizations, uh, not being worthy of money, or not being loved by the community, but again, the community should take care of those community, uh, those organizations, not the government. That's my, that's my understanding, my feeling about it.
I agree with that also.
Are we ready to vote?
Almost, we didn't-
We've got a motion.
We gotta go back into session, well, we never-
Well, I think we did, so, I'm, can I, I'm gonna make an amendment, can I amend your motion, too?
That's the one, yes.
I thought, I hope you'll go for it. Um, I guess the first amendment to the motion would be to include wagons.
Second.
Much so.
Yeah.
We just, we got a motion to include them, then we can do a-
We'll figure that, that'd be my first motion.
Well, let's go one amendment at a time.
Yeah, one, this first amendment, yeah.
So we have amendment to include wagons, do you have an amount on that?
Would have been as high as humane.
Um, I honestly have no idea, what did they request, that's all I-
1,500, wasn't it?
Yeah, Humane Society was funded $1,500 last year, so if you wanna keep them with wagons-
Okay, just to stay consistent, I'd say 1,500, just to stay consistent.
So you went that part of your motion?
Yeah.
So we have an amendment to, the main motion to include wagons, with $1,500, do I hear, a second to that?
Second.
Okay, so we have an amendment, any discussion on the amendment first? All in favor of that amendment?
Uh.
Okay, now we-
No.
You have another-
Yeah, one more amendment.
I didn't say no.
Okay.
You just said you didn't.
All in favor?
Hey.
Aye.
No, I didn't oppose.
What are we doing here?
Nobody.
All in favor of the amendment?
You know, we, we just voted on the amendment, yeah.
We just voted on the amendment.
Okay, I have a second amendment also, too.
That's why I thought-
So we have a second amendment, okay?
Um, second amendment is, um, um, that we put on the, is, we'll vote for this right now, contingent on that we restructure our, get our charitable contributions, as I was saying, structuring out the different 501, um, organizations. Just have that contingency.
I don't think that, that's really important.
We're gonna do that.
Don't put that one on, just wanna hear-
That's complicated.
I don't think we need that under this one, 'cause that's just complic- we can make a motion to add it to-
That's fine, so I'll take that off as an amendment, but I'll, after that's done, I'll, I'll put a motion out to do that, so.
Okay, so we have the-
Because that's how I'm gonna vote for it, is if we do that.
We have the motion to amend, and second, do we have discussion, Sam?
I need to go back to the previous, uh, I expect, because a couple of those organizations deal directly with my daughter, being a veterinarian, that I need to be on the record as abstaining.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to do the same, just a couple of that, I'm friends with people.
On their, on their original-
I mean, it's okay to be friends, but being related to them is, is, you know, if, if any of those that y'all voted on, 'cause y'all were real vague on what we're looking on, uh, if any of it involves any charitable organizations that deal with my daughter and money transferring, I think-
That would be pretty indirect, though, wouldn't it? That would not be direct, she does-
I'm up, either way, y'all will put it, I, I'm in favor of it, and I would be if they, none of it was going to my daughter, because she's doing the job.
Doing the right thing, yeah, I got you.
Okay, whatever, y'all think.
So I guess, good point, if anybody is directly affected by any of these organizations' money, that's, that's a favorable point, so, um-
Um, yeah, so what, what is that? 'Cause I'm, yeah, 'cause I'm like, I love all these organizations.
So is she, is she directly with wagon clips?
I'm not related to anybody.
So you're abstaining on that one?
You don't work for the organization.
No.
If they, if any of that money goes to her veterinarian-
And I have no idea on that?
It's off of it, but, it's all right, I'll just, I'll just give you this.
At best.
And I'm, I'll just declare an indirect association, but I don't have a direct association, I don't profit in any way from those ones.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion?
So I just have to declare that, that's what we did.
Yeah, we're gonna vote, stop.
Okay, we're, we're gonna vote, we, we've already passed the amendment, now we're voting for the main motion with the amendment attached. So I hate to do this to you, but can you read the main motion with the amendment, please, so we're all clear about this?
We'll make an apple. Uh, motion to keep the contributions the same as last year. Vice Mayor Reese seconded. Councilman Evil amended to include wagons at $1,500. Vice Mayor Reese seconded.
All right, got the motion with the amendment, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? All right, good deal, thank you. So we, move on.
Would it be proper for me to make that?
Hold on.
Just so everybody knows, based on what you're doing, I'm gonna make the second reading for 501(c)(3) and so forth, it'll be $35,760, and that'll still be 1% or less of the total budget.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be appropriate for me to make that one motion, just to add to the agenda?
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
For next, for next meeting, add to the agenda, as far as just having-
Just add to the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just add it.
You just add it.
Yeah, it means just add it.
Yeah.
Do you wanna wait till after the budget, then start in August?
Yeah, I'd say, let's start in August.
You just, you just send it to me whenever you're ready, when you want it on?
Yeah, 'cause I mean, that's, we're still working on this year's budget.
My memory is terrible.
Okay, so, now moving along to item three, reading of the amended personnel policy benefits, and it's CO2, O22, O4, O7 dash two. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve items three and four together.
I'll second.
All right, just so the public knows, those are readings of personnel policy for retired health insurance, uh, budget amendment and amended the personnel policy. Do I hear, second to voting?
Councilman Petty, second.
Okay, second, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, so we move then into new business. Councilman Petty.
I'd just like to say that the last meeting, some of the, uh, the mayor was atrocious, and it was a total disgrace to this town. I suspect, from the way this meeting is going, that some people have talked to some people, and it seems to be much more civil, and it better stay this way, or I'm going that way.
All right, second to motion.
I don't know if that was a-
Was there a motion, Sam?
It could be my motion out the door.
Wait, wait, must I write that?
I'm gonna put it up.
Is there something specific we need to?
No, that, that covers most of the meeting.
Just, just be professional, respectful.
Okay, so we're all going to be respectful, and I think we have been tonight, so I appreciate that.
I'm, I'm happy with how we're going, we're doing good, keep going.
That's right.
Chief Davis, next up, the new hire.
So, if y'all remember, I talked to y'all for a minute at the budget workshop and everything, and, uh, this is to add another full-time dispatcher. We have a part-time dispatcher who's worked with us for about seven years now, guys, and she has always helped us for a long time, and so my recommendation is gonna be to move, uh, her name is Miranda Spidey, by the way, is move her into the full-time position for her to take that spot. So if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any of them for you at this time.
Okay, yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve, any discussion? A second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you guys very much, appreciate y'all.
I'm gonna make a motion to remove the next item off the list.
Okay, we'll remove item three off the list. Item four, first reading of, um, the budget ordinance for 2022, 23, B dash 2022, O5, O5 dash one. Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
The motion, do I have her second?
Second.
Now, I do have a quick question, I know this came up in, oh, sorry. This came up in, in, uh, email, but I just wanna make sure I'm understanding. Okay, here's, I'm sorry. Um, so I know we had discussed that the assessment for taxes have gone up, and, and it was, I believe Scott had a discussion with our tax assessor. Uh, it does have the .8168 here, which is down from our normal 1.125. We probably need to discuss that, don't we?
Say that again, Mayor Smith, if you don't mind. The tax rate changed.
Section eight.
Went, went down because your appraisal went up.
So the appraisal went up, so the suggestion I'm understanding was, from the tax assessor, we temporarily bring it down, but my only concern is, if we bring it down, and somehow the tax rate goes back down next year, how would we, would we have to then bring it back up again, or how does that work?
It has to be voted on every year.
So-
Well, I know, but Scott, could you explain the?
May I?
Sure.
There are two components to the tax structure, property tax. One is the assessment of the value of the property, and then there is the rate. Tennessee Code annotated says, you're gonna reassess the property periodically, which has happened. It's all gone up, but unless the council changes the amount of revenue that you want coming in from property taxes, you have to adjust the tax rate to make the same amount there. So if I have you have to adjust the tax rate to make the same amount there. So if I have a hundred dollars, it goes to now a thousand dollars. I have to lower the one point one, two, five, eight to a factor to raise the same amount of money. So you're raising the same amount of money with the exception of new properties. And that's all based on the reassessment of the value. So we're gonna bring in the same amount of revenues plus the new bit, new properties. It, it's not a debatable thing unless you decide to change how much revenue we're gonna bring in for the town, okay? As far as a ten percent or a twenty percent. This is a formality period, okay? When it comes to that part, okay? Because it's all based on the value of the property. Has nothing to do with, hey, we're cutting property taxes. We're not.
Okay, I, and I don't disagree. My only question was if next year that our rate goes, if it's rated at, if the, the asset assessment this year, say it's twenty thousand dollars per home and for some crazy reason it goes down to a hundred and fifty thousand next year. Would, we would then have to raise this.
I don't think they reassess every year.
Well, let's say five years from now.
Every five years.
Well, I think it's six here, yes.
They change that rate.
We, we adjusted to keep the revenues the same or higher.
That's correct.
What, what's that number you got right there, Mayor Smith?
It's Sam.
It's one point one, two, five.
That's less.
That's less.
Okay, so what, what is it? So is it?
Point eight, one.
Point eight, one. And so they're gonna point, they're gonna, point eight, one, sorry, say that again, I'm so sorry.
Point zero, or point eight, one, six, eight.
Six, eight.
Dollars.
It comes out the same amount.
That's automatically happening. Correct.
All right.
It adjusts, like you said.
Oh.
It's like the calendar.
I made a motion that we adjusted so that the same amount of money comes in as far as disregarding the new.
Really, it's, it's part of.
It's already in it. Okay.
Okay, so that's just, I just wanted everybody to understand that because that might not be clear.
Now, that's my second question for you. Will it stay at point eight, one unless we raise it?
Yes, it will stay there unless you raise it or lower it.
Yeah.
Yes, until there's another property reassessment.
Every time they reassess the property values, we have to put that.
It happens.
What's that?
Still paying the same thing.
Right, we do, I do want to make sure people out there.
It's a wash.
We're doing so.
Well.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second to pass.
But it brings it down.
We already voted on the budget. You just had questions after we voted.
No, we haven't voted. We're in the middle of a motion. We're having a discussion right now.
That's why we all said aye.
I'll say aye, you.
No, that was a second.
We, we haven't.
I promise you, we haven't voted on it.
No, we haven't voted. We haven't just. No, we haven't voted. So is there any further discussion or questions about this that you gave us?
Who seconded on the budget?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Um.
I knew we had one.
There were some things I wanted that we had.
Wait, wait a minute, we.
Are we in discussion right now?
I thought we were gonna vote on this.
Oh, I had some things to discuss, yeah, that's okay.
I'll question it. Yeah, I mean, it's not over with.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Because we all, we all go, we, I know there's three in one budget meeting, there's four, four or five in the other, and then I had to have a separate one because I was out of town. Um, there were some, some of these questions on here, Scott. Do we want to address these tonight as far as?
If there's anything you want to change, this is the first reading.
Okay.
That's what the budget says.
Like you asked me to change the five oh one, C three, uh, in the second reading and reflect those increases. If there's anything else that you want to change, now is the time to do it.
So um, one of them was the pool manager, um, we were discussing salary versus hourly. And what did we decide on that as far as the budget is?
That was the issue of the current personnel question. Sally, we recommended to raise her from nine dollars and sixteen cents an hour to twelve dollars.
Twelve, yeah.
The second budget workshop. That has to be formally approved for us to do that starting this inmate, okay? And then Steve had seventy-five cent request for the chief water operator or chief sewer operator, whatever the title is. And those two need to be decided upon.
Yeah.
Because that was a request.
So, that's what I wanted to ask.
The budget is prepared with those being approved, but I need to know what to think about.
Is it, but do you have her at an hourly rate or do we have her at a salary?
Uh, right now she is at an hourly rate and.
She's part-time seasonal.
She works over forty hours. Right now we got it budgeted where I think we can pay her in overtime for that. Question is, do you want her to be salary and work all the extra hours or do you want her to be an hourly employee and get some overtime?
I think it's most beneficial if we pay her by the hour that she works.
Yeah, because it's that way.
She goes way over her hours.
Last year, it's not fair to her to do.
And if she's, that's, that was my concern. If she's always going over overtime, that's what, that was my concern on it. Because if, if you got someone typically constantly going overtime, you try to move them into a different, like a salary position because it's just caught, yeah. How do you, do we, so that's the other thing. If we're gonna be doing it hourly, we, we need to put an overtime cap, yes.
Yeah.
So that's what I.
Power limit, that way she doesn't burn herself out.
Exact, and you're gonna.
Get her fired away from them.
We're gonna have to, we have to, because we can't have these things where someone's coming in saying, I've been doing this for so many years, working this many hours. I, I commend you. Great job, but as far as us go, we have, we need to put a cap on that.
It's a liability if they're working off the clock and not getting paid for us to.
Well, your cap is automatically in there at a thousand hours, twelve thousand dollars is the cap. Uh, she works forty hours uh, a week. We're not gonna get close to that, so I think the way it's structured.
It's already structured with cap.
We're, we got it.
Okay, that answers that question.
Scott, so these are already, the, the raises we talked about are built into the budget that we're fixing to vote on, right?
They are, um, but I need to know for current year. For Sally, because she starts May, okay? And I also need to know for Steve Key's recommendation for the chief.
Do we have to do a budget amendment for that for this year?
We will not. We're okay.
We can do, yeah, and we can just.
As long as the money's in the lineup.
Yeah, we can do that as soon as we're done with this because we're still in the middle of this motion, but we need to come back and make sure that we cover that.
See, that's why, the only reason I canceled that is because of your email.
So.
But those two items need to be discussed and.
Okay, I said, I didn't know that was lumped into that group.
I'm sorry.
Do we need to cover all four of those? Because there's also town clerk and town cashier that you were talking about.
Those are in there.
So do we need to cover all those for, after we're done with this motion?
The clerk and the cashier would start July one.
But Sally, Sally's the only one that we want to start, or Sally and Drew.
Smider.
Andrew, okay. I just wrote that down as a note. So, but we do have town clerk, town cashier and Drew already in the budget as is.
That's correct.
Okay, so that answers those. Um, sorry, I'm just going through here. Council compensation, is that currently included?
It is.
Okay, that's one I would like to take off.
Me too.
Me too.
Okay, so um, I'd like to motion, making a motion to amend, like to amend the motion to take off the council compensation.
So there's a motion to take off the council.
The council compensation, yeah.
That's a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye. Um, I, go ahead.
Does that include the chief's salary also in the budget?
I'm gonna get, yeah, I'm gonna get that.
Let's make sure it's.
Fire chief.
Is in the.
Fire chief is in there, okay? So what I now understand is uh, I'm gonna take off council compensation. And fix to tell me about the chief, fire chief.
Yeah, it's it, so the fire chief is in there, it's budgeted, he's got, he's a salary position.
Yes.
Okay, good. That was the other one.
Full benefits.
Full benefit salary position, all right.
Party July one.
Um, the next one, and this, I, I want y'all to know, this is not for our current mayor. This is for all mayors. I was, um, but I did want to take off that mayor compensation increase as well. And I, I don't want you to take that personally. I don't want to try and do that.
It's just a dollar.
Yeah, so, um, but I just.
Just so you know, the, the mayor, whoever that person is, makes less than the other supervisors.
I got you, I got you. And it, yeah, and so I don't, I don't want you to take that as a.
No, no, no.
And the reason is just because of the office, is because it's an elected position and I don't, I don't see an issue with, you know, city employees making more than mayors because it is, it is an elected position. So that was, I was gonna motion to take off the mayor compensation of a dollar.
Okay. No problem, please, that's what it.
And it doesn't sound like I got a second, so. Um, and then um, we had, the other one was the part-time assistant to town recorder. It's, it's something that we need right now. But it wasn't something that we always need. It was gonna be a non-renewable. And is that, that's how it's budgeted?
Twelve months, yes.
Twelve months, okay. Uh, good with that?
I think we eventually will be able to work it out to where we can shift some stuff around.
Yeah. Y'all, apparently we, y'all were good with not adding um, another federal holiday. Y'all were good with not doing that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I'm good with that. Um, and then the principal payoffs are in there. We're paying off the water tank and the Futurale, correct?
We have those budgeted. You can make that determination later, but it's budgeted to pay off.
To pay off. Good with that. And um, the next, we, the, do we set the water rate increase in this budget as all, we haven't, okay.
We're not.
So that's something that's coming up that we got is the, is a water rate increase. And figuring out, do we want to do an incremental increase or a full-fledged twenty percent increase?
Or do we need an increase at all?
Or do we need an increase at all?
If we can show a profit, this is mine, and I know you have your hand raised, I'm gonna check if you don't mind.
That's fine.
If we can show a profit without raising that tax rate, I would like to show the profit without raising the tax rate. I'd like to raise it when we need to raise it, not because we can raise it.
Absolutely.
So no proactive raising, just kind of if we need it?
If we need it later down the line, let's adjust it.
And we get our, we get our monthly reports too, so we can kind of see, kind of keep an eye on it. But it is something that is coming up. We are gonna have to do.
That's fine.
Things.
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry.
That's right. All I was gonna say is if we do it, I recommend we do it at one time, be done with it instead of one percent this year, one percent next year, one percent, just keep hitting and hit and hit. I say we do it and be done with it when we have to do it.
And they're working some opinions on that too.
Yeah, I mean, that's just my, my, what my thought was, if we're gonna have to do it, let's just do it because you raise a water bill five dollars. You know, okay, it's five dollars, but if you raise it seventy-five cents this year, seventy-five cents next year, seventy-five cents next year.
It matters every year.
It's like, they're going up again, they're going up again. Let's just do it and be done with it.
I'd rather not do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not the ideal situation.
Where do y'all stand? Would you all rather do it or not do it?
Not do it. There's no reason to raise it if we're, if we're in the way.
Okay.
Good job, guys.
No reason.
All right. We got the fire chief, charitable contradiction, contradictions. It can be sometimes, so that's all I have. I think I'm, I think this will be the first budget I vote for.
Call it a work.
I'm sorry, you're calling for the vote, right?
He was teasing me.
All right, call the question, is that what you're doing?
Call the question. I was, I was being nice to you.
Call the question. Did we amend anything?
When he says he's gonna vote on it, we're gonna vote.
Okay, we call the question in order to, to do that, then go to a direct vote. We have to have two, two-thirds, so all in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Okay, so all in favor of then the motion again, that we are going to accept this budget?
Aye.
On the first reading.
First reading, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, any opposed? All right, thank you. Let's move along then to the next item is um, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to refer back to item number three because I wasn't aware that all those salaries were included in that item. I thought it was just gonna be the CFO.
I'll second.
Okay.
Item number three, new business.
I think we did cover it in voting for this, didn't we?
No, they still have to discuss.
We gotta.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, I make a motion that we go ahead and implement these raises as of tomorrow or next paid period for Sally and Drew.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So then we go into item five, uh, citizens' concerns, resolution CR two oh, two oh, excuse me, two oh, two, two, oh, five, oh, five. Councilman Babcock.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Where's this resolution and I follow this?
It's in your packet.
In your email.
So we have a mo, tell us what it's, a second.
If you could, yeah.
Basically, the resolution.
Caption.
The, the resolution pertains to people speaking during citizens' concerns at a, at a city meeting. I believe that people that, citizens' concerns should be citizens of this city, should be able to speak and hear freely about that. I don't think we should have people from the county coming in and telling the city how to do their business. That's my opinion. And I think it should be limited to citizens and business owners of the city. That way.
And nonprofits.
And nonprofits, because they own the real property within the, and then it'd be, each person be limited to two minutes per, per talk.
Yes, sir.
I disagree because there are.
Wait, 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 do we have a second?
We have a second.
We did.
It was three seconds.
Okay, okay, discussion.
I have concern because there are situations in, in, that involve the city but also involve the county. And I think that at least they need to hear their voices heard. That doesn't mean we have to vote in favor of them, but I think they need, they deserve to have their voices heard.
Um, yeah, I completely agree. I think we're walking down some dangerous road there. Um, we are the county seat, um, like so.
Exactly.
We're gonna divide up, we need to be working with the county. Um, and if we suspend on that, we're, we're gonna start limiting speech, you know, like it's, and we're gonna have to keep, you know, suspending the rules, suspending the rules. I mean, we have, I mean, we have staff here that aren't, you know, technically citizens. Um, so I'm, I'm with you. I don't, I don't think this is a good idea at all.
Yes, sir.
I uh, I agree that we have to work with the county, but that could also be added to the agenda if that's an important issue coming up. We can add it to the agenda and talk about it. This is for citizens' concern. My, my thinking, I think we got off base what citizens' concerns really is about. It should be for the people that live in the city because say, hey, look, I've tried to get this problem fixed. I can't get this fixed. I can't get my trash emptied in a timely manner. I can't get my street swept. That's what citizens' concerns is about. All the other stuff that we hear in citizens' concerns are about agenda items. We need to put these people on the agenda and let them speak on the agenda as opposed to just coming up here and talking freely. That's, that's my, what I'm saying in that matter.
So the citizens' concern, like Sonny Carter and um, the pastor and Andy Brady, all these people, they don't live in the city. So that if you cite that, then that couldn't have gotten responded?
They can be, they could because of some of the agenda item of the budget proposal for the nonprofits.
And.
That's a specific item they were speaking to.
I, I think we're adding a layer of bureaucracy we don't need to add. I mean, just let people talk. I mean.
We're here to listen.
We, we are here to listen. And, and there's people that may be coming here just to shop. They may live in a whole nother county. They're coming here to shop and, or something. They're coming here to invest. And they have a concern and this is, this is their outlet to, to speak at, you know, is freedom of speech. It's, it's what we were founded on.
Yes, sir.
I don't disagree. We're here to listen. We're here to listen to people that voted for us, the people that put us in these seats to do the bidding for those people. That's why we're here. We're not here for the people that live in Pleasant Shade, the people that live in Defoe. We're here for the city of Carthage.
Unless they have a business.
Now, now if they own a business, come in and talk.
Or if they request a, to be on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, if they have a legitimate concern for the city, hey, I want to do an event.
They can still speak.
They can speak, but they need to be put on the agenda, not just free for all in citizens' concern.
What if they, what if they attend church here? What if they do their grocery shopping here? What if their kids play in the parks here? I mean, I, I.
I tell you what, I'm gonna go to Honolulu, I'm gonna buy some groceries and I'm gonna go speak in their citizens' concerns, just because I'm there. You know, why not? That's what I'm gonna do.
I mean, we can go all the way to Honolulu.
No, you're going crazy. That doesn't make any sense.
Not going crazy.
You have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and discussion. Any further discussion on this?
Let's read the motion.
All right.
Councilman Babcock made a motion to approve.
Well, here's your resolution. He wants to approve this resolution.
CR two, zero, two, two, zero, five, zero, five.
So make sure you've read it and understand it.
We do a roll call on that, please.
Sure.
Yeah.
And that's just basically to say that, that uh, concerned citizens have to be citizens of the town of Carthage.
Or have a business.
And or business.
Okay.
All right. Now that takes out, you need to put in there, that's gonna take out faith-based, it's gonna take out nonprofits. It's gonna take out a whole lot of people that come up here and talk a lot.
Well, is it people who have property or live here? Is that?
That's pretty much.
A nonprofit is could, is considered a business to me, so nonprofits would still be able to speak.
That's what I, I get it. Nonprofits are busy operating.
Now we're interpreting. And that's what I'm getting at, is this can be open to a huge amount of interpretation.
Well, it could be worded where it's, it's more concrete if it needs to be, but I mean, I don't, you know, it's not a reason to, to just throw it away.
Call the votes.
Any further discussion votes? Call the question, but I think we've had discussion anyway. All, roll call things on this.
Councilwoman Canapple?
Yes.
Councilman Babcock?
Yes.
Councilman Evil?
No.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
No.
Vice Marys?
No.
It's.
Post to the mayor.
Oh, boy. Um, the mayor can defer to vote on things. I tell you what, I, I would, I would vote for it i- if, if we try it for a while and see how that happens. I would vote for it for up to the next couple of ti- times and see how it works for everybody, okay?
We have to reword the.
You have to.
It'd be a temporary resolution.
Yeah, on this one, you gotta. Yeah, on this one, you gotta either.
We can always, we can always make a motion to, to wait with it.
That's right. If you voted to pass it through, and if it didn't work out, then we could make a motion to put rid of it.
I will vote with the understanding, we're going to try it and see how it works. Okay? Only try and see what, what it works. Okay? And it's not permanent. It is a resolution, not an ordinance. Okay?
Yeah, the citizens outside of the city can't speak.
They can speak, I think it's what you're saying, on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, we're not saying don't ever come in and talk, but I mean, if you have a legitimate concern, get on the agenda, we'll come in and discuss that issue with you. But not just come in during citizens' concerns like we have in our free for all.
Okay, we voted on it, let's go home.
Okay, alright.
I just answered it.
Alright, here we go. Go further, um, Spring Street basketball improvements.
Yes, so, um, I think that, uh, for multiple reasons, we need to look at, um, not just things on Main Street. We are doing a lot of things there and it looks great. Uh, we need to look at other areas, especially for the kids. Uh, we live in a, in a city where there's not a whole lot to do. Um, if we do have nice things that the city owns, the city needs to maintain those and make those safe, make those, uh, places where the kids want to go. Personally, I grew up going to, uh, Spring Street Basketball Court. I didn't get a ride to Jimmy Floyd and all that. There's a lot of kids, uh, that grew up where I did and like I did that are in the same boat. And we need to take care of those places just like we do the, the quote, nice areas, too. So, I would like to, uh, make my motion really simple. I'd like to look into the cost of, um, providing a walkway, a concrete sidewalk, if you will, from the street to an opening in a gate that we would have a fence around that, uh, that property, technically around the asphalt. It, it gets really muddy in that dip right there. We talked about, we talked about putting the tile in forever. It hasn't happened. I don't think that's the ideal situation anyway. Let's build a sidewalk and let's, uh, wrap that around so that they're not, if you shoot the ball and you miss, like I often do, it's gonna go off into the mud, or it's gonna go into the spring, or it's gonna go into the sewer.
I always miss.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Les, can you?
That's what we got.
Speak a little bit.
That's, that's my motion.
We got it.
Okay.
We gotta spend the rules.
Yeah, I've, I've got a motion. I'd like to see if I have a second.
You do have a second.
Do we already have a second?
You got a second already.
So, we have discussion now.
Our motion, yeah, motion to suspend the rules so Les can speak.
Do I have a second? We gotta vote on suspend.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Les, just help us out here.
What do you wanna know?
Jesse has a suggestion.
Can you fix that?
Wait, wait, wait. You, we just voted on it.
No.
We voted.
We voted to suspend the rules.
See, we want to.
Well, that's just to say.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You know, and, and I think we all, I guess what I'm saying, we all agree with you a hundred percent. It needs to be great down there. Though, a little bit of the problem is though, everything we put down there gets torn. In fact, they, they just, I'm just secondly.
He's not asking for something, he's asking for a walkway.
I understand, but help us out here.
We just vote on this and let them.
I know, but I really wanna address that.
But, but, uh, all I'm asking is help us out here.
It's worth a nice discussion.
How can we work with whoever's there not to be destroyed?
Fully get it. So, I'm, I'm, like I said, I was a kid that went to that area. Um, Spring Street Basketball Court has always been, um, and I can say this 'cause like I said, I was one of them. That's where the underprivileged, uh, kids, that's where we went. That's where we went to play, 'cause we could walk there. We didn't need a ride, nobody took us. Um, so, you're gonna have some things like the, I know the bench got moved, um, but you don't, you don't punish all of the kids because one kid or two kids.
Well, no, we, we don't, yeah.
It, because they, they make a mistake and they, they don't appreciate what they have. I think we need to pour some resources in there. We need to make it nice. And, you know, with the understanding, and we can put it out there, and I, I would, you know, play to the camera, I guess, for that. Um, you know, please, if, if we put money into, uh, the city, into these nice, these, these places, please keep them nice. Please, um, appreciate that and, and take care of them. But I'm, I'm talking about a sidewalk and I'm talking about.
No, I understand.
You know, they're, they're probably not gonna, not gonna mess that up.
Yeah, no, I, so you're talking about, just, just so we're clear, a sidewalk around?
Nope, sidewalk from the street to the basketball court. There would be an opening there where they'd walk through. And then the fence would go the perimeter of the actual basketball court itself.
So, we'd have a, like a little bridge way?
Probably. It'd probably be, you know, one of those culverts there and then.
Basically, where the word would be going under.
Okay.
And then concrete over top of it. It would be nice.
Okay, so if it's doable.
And all I wanna do is find out the cost of that. That's my own, that's my motion, is to find the cost.
The motion is to find out the cost and discussion.
Yes, um, I, I agree. I think this is something we need to look at. It's, I mean, it's where, I, I see a lot of people, I mean, I'm going down there playing basketball with homeschool kids all the time, and, uh, it gets dark, too. You can't see. And I throw, I'm the one who throws the ball in the mud all the time. I can't hit it. Um, and I think.
They had lights?
Yeah, yeah. Maybe it might help my game a little bit, but.
I was gonna.
It is.
I'm sorry. Bill's next.
Go ahead. I messed that up, sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. Oh, but yeah, I think it's worth looking at getting the sidewalk, if we need to do some sort of grading down there. We don't have as many restrictions there as we do at the other parks either. So, we can get stuff done at a lot more cost effective and make that better for kids. We've gotta have more kids areas. We gotta have.
The kids from the spot go there all the time, but we've quit going because we literally weighed mud, water.
Yeah.
I'm talking about it. If you dig down there, you're gonna find water all the way around.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I think Jesse's.
But.
Need to call for a case sidewalk.
Just, just to be clear, there's a natural spring there also.
And I was, I'm almost done, Bill. I'm so sorry.
I, I, I.
Oh, what I was gonna say, though, too, is I almost feel like, like maybe we shouldn't just look at just that one project, but maybe just, maybe a possible overhaul on some, some stuff down there. Because, um, let's just say we, we do that one project and we find out, well, there's a problem if we do this, and now we gotta do this, you know. Maybe we could just come up with some ideas on it. I don't wanna mess with the money.
Well, that's something parts of reparations need to look at. What we need to do is discuss this specific issue. And once it's discussed, then we need to vote on it.
Okay.
We can drag, drag it out way too far into other areas.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I, I would like to add, uh, with the historic spring down there, the William Walton, we can't do anything to that because it's one of the two springs in.
No.
The William Walton.
We don't need to mess with that. We're gonna put a cover over that. What I'm doing, I plan on putting a cover over that.
Yeah, 'cause it's, it's, it's a historic site.
The fence, the, the fence itself may, may, you know.
Well, it'd make a big mud hole down there if y'all been down there and seen it.
Yep.
Well, we found out, there's three pipes running all that round, and they were stocked up, so it's, it's drained out now.
And I'm just, I'm saying, if we own it, we need to take care of it. If not, we need to sell it.
I think we.
And it is well-used.
Yep. Yes, sir.
I'd like to add to your motion that we possibly check in the cost of lighting down there also because.
Yeah.
That's a residential area.
I'll second Steve's amendment.
We can at least discuss it, though.
I mean, we can find out what it is it takes to put it in.
What do you mean by that?
Well, you've got homes that would be lit.
You can't have lights in a residential area like that. I mean, depending what kind of lights you put in.
We got a basketball court in the residential area.
Do you also have ball fields in a residential area that don't have lights, and that's why there's an ordinance against it?
Yeah.
That we have.
The high school field.
Well, we can look into changing ordinance.
That's why I'm letting you guys know.
'Cause all parks are in residential areas.
Well, no, she's talking about the, the school's baseball field up here. It has no lights. They have to play during the day because they couldn't put lights there.
But what I'm saying is, if that's our park in the city and we can't put lights because it's in a residential area, our, our own ordinance is hurting the city, yes.
Maybe a type of lights we could, though.
Maybe, that's why.
We're looking at C one versus, actually, that's C one zoning. It's not residential.
Yeah, it's not.
If it's city.
That's C one.
No.
No, it is R two, but it's R two, and the other parks are R one.
But it's against residential. It's against the residential.
Yeah, yes. You, you, you don't want, you don't want these lights shining in homes. I mean.
When they can't see, they might throw a basketball through their, through their windows, so they might want lights there.
Well.
I was just letting you guys know.
There's an ordinance about it.
I just thought lights would be appropriate.
So, we have a motion and a discussion. Can we vote on it?
We got an amendment.
Yeah, it's amendment, and I did second. Steve's amendment.
I'll second the amendment.
I think he already did.
Somebody already seconded it?
I did, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so, could we read the amendment, then?
The amendment is adding lights to the.
To his.
The process.
Now, we're discussing that. Do we need to look into that ordinance first before we add that to it?
Well.
I'd rather we look into the cost.
Just look at the cost. I mean, if they say it's gonna be four million dollars, probably not gonna do it.
Yeah, I wanna make a suggestion. Could we have that separate and just be clean with your motion so we can go forward with it?
It goes along.
It makes a lot of sense.
It goes along with the cost.
Yeah, let's just keep this clean and then we can make a separate motion about lights.
But we can do all this at one time to know what the costs are, and then we come back and my agenda item will be to add such and such.
Sidewalk, we can pretty much take care of ourselves here. That's no problem. We, we do it all the time, so.
So, we're looking into the cost of it. That would be presented at the next meeting, what the cost would be.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be under ten thousand, so let's just take care of it in the city.
We wanna see, yeah, I'd like to see how we're gonna do it.
Mayor, I wanna see at next meeting, uh, what the costs are for those three items. They don't necessarily have to do the lights, but it's just, let's see what the cost, so we can make a decision and not push this down two, three months from now.
Okay.
And I, Mayor Smith, I, I'd like, the reason is, I'd like to see the cost, and I'd also kinda like to see what the design is, if that's, that's what I was kinda.
The fence, are you talking about, Jesse? Oh, I won't finish what you're talking about.
Let's let the people who do fences around those, you know, the experts. I mean, I'm, I'm not an expert at it, so.
Well, you may be the one that has to say your part.
Yeah, I could say ten foot or whatever, but let's see what they recommend with the houses around it. That might be.
It's kind of a ballpark here. We're not looking for.
So, you want totally surrounding the area?
That's what it's for.
Oh.
Not just the front, but the back.
I didn't even get it.
And then their big gate going in. Okay.
I'll pretend like I meant to say that.
Alright, so we have the motion to get the cost for the gate, the fence surrounding and gates, and a sidewalk, or some way to get across without the mud there.
And first, we have to vote on the amendment to the.
Well, not, not some way to. I mean, specifically, concrete, sidewalk, fence, light. That's what I want. The props on.
Are you just, you just gonna amend your motion then? 'Cause I made the amendment.
We need to vote on the amendment.
Yeah, the amendment to add lights to your motion.
It's already been seconded. We need to vote on it.
Yes.
Okay, we have an amendment to add the cost of lighting to the main motion. Any further discussion on that?
Uh, yeah, as far as the fence, what kind of fence?
Chain link, chain link fence.
Okay.
Okay.
Same as that.
We have an issue with fencing in town, so that's why I'm saying that.
Okay, but let's start with the amendment first. We gotta get the amendment out of the way. So, the amendment is to add the, the price of.
People fencing around yards.
The amendment is to add the price of.
This will be a company.
Commercial ballpark lighting.
And fence, and.
Well, well, this is an amendment. We gotta deal with the amendment first.
We're not talking about the house.
I have wrote down.
No, 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 no. This is just an amendment for the lighting. It has stated subject. Okay, all in favor of the amendment to add the cost of lighting to this, this.
Amendment.
This sculpture that we're doing. Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? So, now we have the main motion with amendment attached with the main moment.
You're opposed to the lights.
Okay.
Hold on.
Let's.
You were opposed to the lights?
You're opposed to the lights.
I'm, no, I'm sorry, thank you.
Houses down there.
They're all about to make big cookies.
We're just hitting the price right now. We're not.
I'm trying to stay away from the cookies.
Okay, so we have five to one. Okay, now, let's go back to the main motion with amendment. Would you please take a moment to read that so we all understand what we're doing here? Okay?
Uh, Councilman Peters made a motion to look into the cost of providing a walkway to an opening gate with a fence around Spring Street's all part.
Alright, and with the amendment on it, it is to check into the cost of lights also. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? So, we will look into the cost and design. Thank you. Alright, the next one is, um.
The pool schedule.
Yeah, pool schedule is, I'm just curious, is Evan still out there? Okay, the pool schedule that Ms. Sally has come up with is here, and who's gonna do the pool schedule? Councilman Babcock.
Uh, y'all probably already saw, did y'all see this? It was posted on Town and Park's webpage. And this is the actual schedule that Ms. Sally put out herself. She filled this out, she figured this is what she could do. She asked.
That's not what we got.
No, but there you go. It's not the one we always think of. Is that what you're saying?
Have you not seen this one?
That's what I sent out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the one.
Yeah, that's okay. This is the, yeah, this is the.
He thought you were saying that.
Saying what?
That it wasn't the one we got.
Oh, no, this is the exact same one that she filled out.
That's what I had. That's what I was saying.
So, I, I make a motion that we adopt this schedule for the pool for this year.
I second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Yeah, and then we're gonna, on August fifth, we're gonna decide closer to then if we wanna extend the season.
We can discuss that at the time.
Okay, so, we, and we wanna maybe talk about that at the July meeting then, for, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's another email to you.
Any further discussion?
Okay.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Thank you. And, and now, is Evan still out there?
Evan.
Okay, we have a, a change order that he's bringing up regarding the timehouse. Would you explain that, please?
I got it in my packet.
Yes.
Okay. These?
I, this is what I included, Evan, the ones from that day.
Okay. Um. So, there's.
Is Joe still out there, too?
There's one in here that's, that was part of the contract and part of the plans for the concrete, uh, for the foundation. The way the pre-engineer metal building companies are doing on the mountain, they're swamped with projects. They no longer give us, uh, preliminary reactions to do the foundations with, so we have to assume a foundation and bid it. And then, once they get the, the true build and the, they get the project, in other words, from the contractor, then they send us the, the real reactions of how to, uh, wind loads and things, how to hold the building down. So, then we have to redesign the footings to what it requires to make the building, make codes. That's what that's for. That's how much the concrete increased. That was always allotted in the contract. It's just, we have to ask for it. That's in the plans and specs.
He said the first one from.
It's the nine, it's eleven thousand one seventy-four eighty-one.
It's no, eleven thousand, no, but do we have that?
I don't, I don't think I have that one, Evan. I have the seventeen, fifteen, and fourteen.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, well, then it's asphalt. We'll get to that, but this is.
So, it's eleven thousand in addition to this?
Well, it's the total that we don't have, but.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I've got a question on that. Was there not something that happened that the building had to be raised? An additional height?
Yes, but that was no cost.
Okay, I just wanna make sure this was not the cost of that.
No, there's no cost in that. This is just the, I don't know if you've seen it, but the, there's a floor, but under that floor, there's large foundations.
Right.
That's what this is for.
Okay.
Okay, we assumed a certain size to bid the project. And there was notes and it was in the plans and specs that, hey, look, this is what you're gonna bid on. Because we assumed a certain size to bid the project, and there was notes, and it was in the plans and specs that, hey, look, this is what you're gonna bid on, but if they change, then we're either gonna give you more money or we're gonna take money away from you.
Okay.
And the way they done the X brace and all that building, they made the two interior columns larger than what we assumed.
So that's the eleven thousand that we don't have here?
That is correct.
Okay.
Alright, now, the asphalt, this is, this is asphalt in from the finished floor elevation all the way to the road in front of the entire, um, new portion of the three base. We had in the, we had in the contract for him just to do a strip in front of it, um, eight feet wide down through there. Um, and with the elevation difference, if you're gonna do it, do it right, and that's, this would get it plum down the road, you'd have a, uh, one continuous grade up to your new building, and what we was doing is only doing that section, the tallest section down by Second Street, I guess that's where.
Second Avenue.
Second Avenue. So that's what that's for. We're doing the whole thing so you get a brand-new, and we're fixing the, I don't know if you see the drain, right to the top front, we're raising it back up, you know, getting it toward to actually catch water. Um, that's what that one's for.
So basically, this is just so they can slope it all the way down so the fire trucks can drive it right up there?
Yes, all the way down to the, all the way down to the road, not stopping short.
And prepping the whole ground that didn't have asphalt on it before. And then the drain, that's-
The drain is optional, and that's why, that one's, that's what we gals call. Um, we was not gonna mess with the drain to begin with in the plan, with the original plans.
But it would not be up to the height of the, to the pavement, would it?
If, if it was left like it was, um, we weren't gonna mess with it, but now that, if you go with the change order for the asphalt, which it really needs to be done, uh, now's the time that you could take the water that's coming around the building and put it into the storm drain system without it going to the road. It's always went to the road before, I just didn't wanna do the project, and y'all come back three months later and say, well, while we had the opportunity, and we had this, you know, had this open line, and we're not putting, put the storm drain in, so that's what that's for. But you don't have to do it, it can go like it always has, but that is, we're trying to look ahead, so, instead of coming back and saying, we wish we had done.
Just one quick question, is there any part of this that was maybe miscalculations on someone's part, or any of this?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'll tell you, we survey out there when we take shots, we don't shoot every inch of the ground. So what we do is we take shots from here to the wall, or, you know, every twenty feet. Well, our calculations was off three inches, but three inches went from that pad in front to the road, so there is a, as far as survey goes, you just can't get everything that that's doing out there, so, um, it, it's a rough guess, but instead of doing it and giving y'all a pro, you know, giving you a project that's not, uh, best words.
Ninety-five percent?
Well, it just wouldn't look that good, okay? I mean, you're gonna pay this one steep bay, you know, a bay and a half, because that's kinda how the elevation goes, you know, you, you just have a, a triangle pavement here.
It's gonna match everything up.
Yes, it's gonna make everything-
All pair, all dress right dress.
Make everything uniform.
Yeah, so-
But that was, it would be in the project one way or the other, I mean. But there is three, just so y'all know, there's three thousand, two hundred thirty dollars, seventy-two cents that you would accommodate these, because that was what was allowed for the apron house.
So we're looking at about forty-nine thousand change order here altogether, with everything added in.
All together, and we'll work with him on, on some of the prices here, too.
So this is-
Chief, did you want, I mean, can we, can we suspend the rules?
But I just wanna go ahead and, I wanna make a motion to approve this.
Well, can we use the chief?
But we'd have, we want to-
We've got a motion in a second.
Can we have a motion second, but I'd like to hear from chief just a second, if you don't mind. Can we suspend the rules?
Now we're sober for discussion.
Okay.
Real quick, and then we could suspend the rules so chief can talk, too.
I don't think we have to suspend the rules when we ask somebody for, you know, information.
Oh, I don't, I don't mind.
We're taking it too far one way and too far the other.
I'm totally fine with that. That's happened to me before, though, I'm just saying. Uh, what, so we're adding all, all three of these are being added up? Am I correct on that?
There's another, there's a fourth for eleven, apparently.
Then the eleven thousand that we don't have to bid for.
Comes up to about forty-nine thousand dollars change order, not a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
That's almost a-
Will you tell me the exact amount?
Thirty-three percent change order. What was the original, what was the original estimate?
If they, if they do all.
Wasn't it like a hundred fifty, a hundred sixty something?
Which one?
Yeah.
Two seventy-five.
Who's, okay, so, well, still.
Chief?
What, what would you want? I'm sorry.
He was wanting to know what the original bid was.
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five.
And, and we're at the two seventy-five now, there's gonna be an additional fifty thousand dollars on top of that.
It don't have to be fifty if you don't do the drains.
Well, that's the name, too. If we're gonna build it, we need to build it right.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I told him to give us a change order to bid a drain. Yeah, that, we get too much water on that road, isn't it? You do.
Can we, let's chief just speak a minute, please.
When the building, when new parks is built, there's tremendous amount of water that comes all, all the way from Main Street that used to come down where the New Port. A lot of that went in that catch plant, that went in that drain, didn't it? But that's being diverted around that now, and it's all gonna end up the road. Uh, as far as the, the parking area in the ramp, we had a short ramp, we'll probably get five rep in. But, we're looking at a replacement of a million dollar fix out for us, you don't wanna take chances on it when it bumps up, of course, you got the taller base over there, but, uh, flat or five has less than three and a quarter inches clear to the side of the bay. Yeah, we, so when you start backing that in, depending on that, that would be-
We need a smooth transition.
I think we're on the same page.
My question, though, and it's important because this is citizens' money that we're upping, is any of this, we know this, we know the city didn't miscalculate, we know the construction, is there any way to absorb some of the miscalculations so our citizens don't have to absorb it? I guess that's my question.
Sure, are you asking to absorb it?
The people doing the work?
No, no.
I think, I mean-
I think, and, and, I-
I just know who, who about to turn it on here.
Well-
Evan to absorb.
Yeah, I told her, I mean, we only build, we, we try to do it as cheap as possible for y'all, so, we done this building for fourteen thousand, the whole thing, for us to be down here, so, that's all I charge to do that whole building.
And Mayor Smith, I, I'm with you, you know, like, this is citizens' money, we need to be frugal, this is coming in fifty thousand more than it has, uh, but also, kinda when you're headed to construction, there's usually a little bit of range of unknowns.
Okay.
And the world we live in.
And, just the water problems in this town are huge, we need to have the drain on here, we need to just make this-
I don't disagree with you on all of this.
No, no, you're, you're trying to be good with taxpayer money, that's committable.
It should not have come up this late in the process.
Yeah.
This should have been at the time.
We gotta fix it, but it should have came up a little bit earlier, yeah. I don't think anyone wants to spend that money, but we need to do it right.
We have to, we have to.
That's my suggestion.
Yeah.
I don't just come back and say, well, we should have done something different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The concrete's, the concrete's concrete, it had to, it had to happen, so it was in the specs all along, so.
I will say the foundation appears are enormous. There's a lot of concrete.
Okay, so we, we have a motion to approve this in a second, and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Jones, oh, shoot, I hope he's still here.
He's probably sleeping. I would be.
I'm having a cooking.
I'm gonna check-
I'm sitting there watching.
While we're calling, please.
I'm gonna make sure my daughter's good.
Okay, let's take, let's take a, let's take a three-minute break here so I can get him. Have a cookie, have some water. Come out, Mr. Jones, are you still with this? I'll reconvene. Okay, we're now reconvening, and this is Mr. Jones again, so he's gonna talk, talk about the projects. You wanna start with the, whatever you wanna start with, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I'll start with, I'll start with the INI project. So to bring everybody up to where we are on the INI project right now, uh, all of the flow monitoring has been completed, uh, we got really good flow monitoring data, uh, George Curers, uh, is crunching all that data right now, he and I are scheduled to look at it together here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, what we're able to do with this data is we're able to see which portions of your sewer system, uh, we get the largest amount of flow from during rainfall events and after rainfall events, this helps us narrow down exactly which sub-basins, obviously, are the culprit in, uh, allowing the INI in the system. After we do that, that helps us, to further refine that, we'll begin to have smoke testing done, we're also doing mapping with the system right now, having all of the manholes inspected, GPS located, uh, so that we build a system map for you all in a GIS. Um, you know, ultimately, this project will, uh, what we'll have at the very end, you'll have a report that identifies where the flows are in the system, uh, the portions of the system that have the highest amounts of INI, and then that will allow us to do a design for a re-out project, which helps you focus your money, so instead of going out and spending millions of dollars doing the entire system, we're able to locate the portions of the system that are really for us, and what generally find in sewer systems is that seventy-five percent of the INI comes in in certain areas, and so that helps us narrow that down, and gives you the ability to focus your funds, uh, to drive up the INI in your system, lower your operational costs, increase your overall capacity both in the collection system and at the treatment plant, and save money while you're doing it. So, it's kinda what we're offering right now, I would say that ultimately, you know, we're probably about fifty percent of the way there, on knowing where these flows are and knowing exactly what the most efficient way is to fix them, whether it can be CIP lining of the pipe, uh, does the pipe need to be replaced, do manholes need to be coated, so we're continuing to work through that, uh, and continuing to get that data, and also those manhole and line inspections right now, and we'll start smoke testing here in the next few months. Okay, we got two questions, if you have a second, okay? Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What kind of estimated time do we have to have that report, uh, finished up?
That report, so we have a schedule that, uh, was approved by SRL, and so that report and the design for the re-out project is due this fall, based on that timeline. I do not remember, I apologize, uh, but I don't have it in front of me, I don't remember the exact date on when that is, uh, is to-
Jesse, did you have one?
That was my question.
Oh, okay. Okay, any more questions about that part? Okay, you wanna go to the water pump, then?
Sure, so on the Three Creek Water Booster Station, that project, I'm sure everybody's looking at it and thinking, you know, well, we hadn't really made it very far here, and the reason is that we are waiting on materials to still arrive, so, uh, all the shop drawings have been reviewed, uh, the contractor has been on site, they have verified the location of the existing water mains, uh, the size of the water mains, and, and they are waiting to mobilize fully to the site and begin the construction work once, uh, they have the pump station. Once they have the pump station on site, uh, work should progress relatively quickly, and within a couple of months, we should be to the point of being able to start the pump station up. The only significant delay that we are anticipating, uh, at this, I mean, regardless of the pump station, is the backup generator, there was a long lead time on the backup generator, but we will bring the booster station online, and have the booster station in operation, uh, and then the last thing that will be done is the backup generator will be set and then tied into the system.
Okay, we got two questions, if you have a second, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What kind of estimated time do we have to have that report, uh, finished up?
That report, so we have a schedule that, uh, was approved by SRL, and so that report and the design for the re-out project is due this fall, based on that timeline. I do not remember, I apologize, uh, but I don't have it in front of me, I don't remember the exact date on when that is, uh, is to-
Jesse, did you have one?
That was my question.
Oh, okay. Okay, any more questions about that part? Okay, you wanna go to the water pump, then?
Sure, so on the Three Creek Water Booster Station, that project, I'm sure everybody's looking at it and thinking, you know, well, we hadn't really made it very far here, and the reason is that we are waiting on materials to still arrive, so, uh, all the shop drawings have been reviewed, uh, the contractor has been on site, they have verified the location of the existing water mains, uh, the size of the water mains, and, and they are waiting to mobilize fully to the site and begin the construction work once, uh, they have the pump station. Once they have the pump station on site, uh, work should progress relatively quickly, and within a couple of months, we should be to the point of being able to start the pump station up. The only significant delay that we are anticipating, uh, at this, I mean, regardless of the pump station, is the backup generator, there was a long lead time on the backup generator, but we will bring the booster station online, and have the booster station in operation, uh, and then the last thing that will be done is the backup generator will be set and then tied into the system.
Okay, any questions about that? Okay, uh, in the, uh, the bid process that we went through, please, for the water line, Main Street water line.
Two bids turned in, uh, the apparent low bidder at the time of bidding, uh, came in a little over eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, once I returned to my office and I began to investigate the low bidder, looking at references, uh, looking at their license number, they had a license number, they had a expiration date, but the problem with their license, uh, had been put into a retired status. So, what a retired status means is that they had not paid their fees to the state of Tennessee to have an active contractor's license number. They're not, under Tennessee law, allowed to bid a project without an active Tennessee license number. Because of that, we have to throw their bid out. Uh, when we throw their bid out, we're only left with one bid, uh, that was a bid from Isengard, which was about one point one million dollars, three hundred thousand dollars more than the low bidder. Uh, based on the fact that we only have one bid now, and the one bid that we're left with is so far over budget, uh, our recommendation is that you throw out all bids, um, and then we take a look at value engineering the project by, we typically, anytime we're inside a roadway section like this, we like to utilize ductile iron pipe, uh, it's just the most robust, uh, pipe, it, uh, does not break easily, if someone were to dig down in the future and hit it with something, uh, but in this instance, uh, we can, uh, bid as an alternate or, uh, as the base bid, PVC pipe, C nine hundred PVC pipe, uh, that will help to reduce the overall cost of the project some, um, and it will give us the opportunity to try to find additional bidders. Uh, finding bidders, obviously, uh, we had three plant holders and two bidders, uh, there was not a lot of interest in the job, uh, originally, uh, and part of that may have been the fact that it was ductile iron pipe, and there is a, uh, significant lead time on ductile iron pipe right now, so, uh, it will add a few more weeks to the process, uh, but we can have the job rebid and a recommendation back in front of council, uh, at this council meeting, so it'll delay the start of the project by approximately four weeks.
Okay, so do I have a motion to, please?
Uh, I got two motions, if that's okay?
Okay, hold on just a minute, Mr. Jones.
I'd like to motion that we refuse the, the bid.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in second, any discussion? To refuse the next in line, which was three hundred thousand over. All in favor of refusing?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
It's closer to four hundred thousand over.
It's right, it's four hundred, it's here.
No, no, okay, I just wanna make sure we're, I wanna, you said refuse the bid because this bid was four hundred thousand over, the bid you rejected because they didn't have a license. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
I just wanna make sure we're, we're-
Yeah, we're talking about that one, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor rejecting the, okay, that Isengard bid.
My second motion is that I've got-
Wait, was everybody an aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, my second motion, and I'll slow down, and you know, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay.
Uh, second motion is to rebid the project based on that new scope that he just presented to us.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, to rebid the project, uh, any discussions on that?
He was saying that we get more bidders possible.
Well, they're changing type of pipe, because I, I spoke to Isengard, and with the pipe reduction, they'll be down around that, price tag.
Yeah.
Come back and-
Well, and I think, Mr. Jones, we had also discussed having, having two bids processes, one with the ductile iron and one with PVC, and to compare the prices.
Yes, we can, we can do that, such that you have pricing for those materials.
Right, yeah, I think that's, that's a better comparison to go with, so, I, I, can you make that your motion? Is that what you're basically?
Yeah, that was my motion, yes, ma'am.
So we have the motion to rebid with, uh, our price, alternatives, one would be ductile iron, and the other would be using the PVC price, uh, PVC. Uh, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think we're okay, if you can send us those new bid specs, we would be glad to put it in the paper tomorrow, if we can.
Yes, ma'am, I will have the short end to you in the morning, and we will, uh, re-advertise, uh, to contractors, and I will, uh, do all I can now that we have a bid out to, uh, to help drive some additional interest on the project, so.
And, um, just to let everybody know, you expedited the process as quickly as you could, T-Dick there, too, this is just a bump in the road, so we, we-
Unfortunately, yeah, and, uh, you know, with material pricing and stuff these days, it's, uh, yeah.
So, that's, I guess, that's the projects, right? Is that correct?
Uh, the, all the other one we have is the Futuro Alley project that I had talked about.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, yes.
Obviously, everyone had seen, uh, work going on on that project, work is, is progressing, uh, you know, they're through, basically, Futuro Alley, with the main installation of the water to line, uh, the next steps that they have on that line will be to pressure test it, disintegrate it, uh, pull back tees off of it, once everything is ready to be placed in service, they'll begin to, uh, schedule shutdowns with business owners to shut down their water service and tie their water service to the new water main, uh, and then that will allow them to, uh, take the old water main out of service and cut the cap in, so, uh, you should see that, that will occur within, by the time this point, next month, will be done there, and that'll leave the work up on Main Street for them to, to complete, in order to get rid of the dead ends, so.
Okay, we appreciate that. Any more questions before we sign off? Thank you so much, we appreciate it, and we'll talk to you tomorrow.
And, uh, we will, I will get you the information in the morning, ma'am, to go onto the paper.
Sounds good, thank you.
Aye, thank you, y'all.
Uh, I'm going to take the number ten off, but just with the caveat that when we had a hundred and fifty people the other night for this thing, we realized one bathroom in the museum just, just not work, so we need to talk about this at some point. Yes, sir?
Um, and that, that was gonna-
He had his hand first.
Okay.
That was gonna be my motion, was, um, if we could, um, table number ten to the first item of business on unfinished business.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me. We do have a Dr. Duke here, so we need to get him.
Yeah, and that was gonna be my second motion to, um, well, I guess, let me finish the first, first motion would be to table number ten to first item on unfinished business next month.
That'd be fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, motion in second, any discussion? All in favor of tabling to next month, okay?
Okay, and then, uh, I'd like to motion that we, uh, add an agenda item to the list of Dr. Duke came to speak to us about the sign ordinances.
Motion to add to the agenda, second?
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
We'll fall asleep.
Wake up, okay, here we go, Dr. Duke, could you just?
The main thing is, what do you wanna know?
Our concern is the right of way and signs, that's the main thing, yeah.
Right of way and signs, okay. It's pretty simple, uh, signs are not allowed on the right of way according to our ordinance, the city ordinance, uh, and that's any sign except for wayfinding, wayfinding signs or traffic signs, which are normal, you know, like, are normal traffic signs, there's different varieties of, I don't, you know, they, there's a certain description that those are, uh, the, uh, they're, they're circuitry to meet that, but I think everybody knows what a, what a wayfinding, wayfinding sign is. So otherwise, there's no other signs that's allowed on the right of way by our ordinance.
So, currently, no signs.
No, no signs except for those that they're in, right.
We want that to change, we have to change that as a council, we have to do a new ordinance.
Okay, but let me interject.
But as it stands-
He's got the floor right now, that's not interjecting.
No, no, just go ahead.
No, it's, it's okay, but, but yeah, it's, it, so that's, that's the way I'm hearing it, is as of right now, any sign that's out there is out there against ordinance, so if we wanna change that, we can, we have the ability to, on the right of way.
On the right of way, on the right of way. Now, if you, if it's five foot from the right of way, as far as the right of way goes, if it's on the land, five foot from it, then it's perfectly okay, or ten foot from, from the other line, uh, from, from the, from the, you know, the line.
It's just right, and if you see, like, like you're saying, a sign that's directional, we have somebody else have a sign right by it, that's the right of way, that's why those signs are in, the state signs do in that.
This is just the right of way that's allowed, I don't, this, you know, it's totally different if you get on the land, if somebody's land, private land, that's, that goes under its whole thing, it's just the right of way, the, you know, the city right of way, and that's the way the way it is most cities, so it's not, it's not our city.
It's the same for the state, too, isn't it, for T-Dog?
Yeah, it's the same for the state.
Okay, yes, sir.
Alright, so let's take, for example, I'm a real estate agent, I was, you know, a real estate company has, is having an auction, and at the intersection twenty-five and Industrial Drive, there's signs almost all constantly there. Are those illegal?
Yes. If they're on the right of way, they're illegal. Yes, according to our ordinance. Now, remember now, I'm saying it's our ordinance, there's no state that says, the, the, now, the state, there is, there are state statutes, there's three state statutes, I've got a whole thing, uh, there's three state statutes that deals with election signs, and that, and they take precedence over whatever our ordinances are, but those, so you can't put those on election signs on, the, on, uh, on right of ways as well. So, basically, right of ways, just about anywhere you go, they're just not allowed on right of ways, you know, that's, that's a pretty standard thing throughout, uh, you know, that's, that's, I, I reviewed, before I did the sign ordinance, I reviewed, I don't wanna have any cities, but for, for each one of these things that I put in there, you know, as far as signs, whether they're of what size and everything.
But as long as it's private property, so if you wanna put a sign on private property, no problem.
That's a totally different, totally different. That's a totally different story now, yeah, and private property may be the difference, if you wanna put on a right of way, maybe just, you know, you, you got a lot of feet difference, you know, to put down, so that's a, that's a totally different story, you know?
How would we know what the right of way was?
Well, the, the right of way, it, technically, it's measured from the center of the road over, and we have certain, depending on what road it is, that you're, the width of the road, we have different widths of the road, so it, it has to do with what, whether it's a, a main road, or a supply road, or a connecting road, or whatever, and that's all in, if you go to our, our, uh, municipal ordinance, and, and it will tell you which, which one of those roads and how wide they are, and then you measure across, and it's, it's so many feet from that. But I, I think, you know, I, I think a lot of it, I think it's pretty simple, really, and a lot of it is, most of it, if it's on, if it's, if it's, if it's a sidewalk, and it's on between the sidewalk and the road, that's a right of way, you know, that, basically, if it's on the other side of the sidewalk, it's probably not on the right of way, you know, it's, I, I, I mean...
So it's not the edge of the road, it's the center of the road?
It's, you measure from the center of the road over, it's...
Well, there's usually a certain amount of, almost like grass area or sidewalk, that is still on the right of way.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's, and one way to kinda know that is what these guys mow, you know, whatever they have to mow is the right of way, basically, he's been mowing.
Well, not ready to take all that land where they tore down the house, it's down by the swimming pool.
Well, yeah, that, yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm talking, I'm talking about, I'm...
It's not the road, weren't they, they mow on the side of the road, the strips that they have to mow.
So two things, and thanks for coming out here tonight, you did that on your own time, and you're not a city...
No, no, I'm not on the plane.
You're gonna do nothing, but thank you for coming out, uh, for a second, do we want to, I mean, we don't need to address that tonight, but do we wanna look at changing that?
I think that's something we need to get some more system interaction on, uh, especially with election signs coming up and... I hate to throw it out there, but we might need, we might need about a thirty-minute session to invite people in.
It might get heated.
We don't spend enough time.
Yeah, people say, we take, uh, you know, oh, you took my sign up, oh, you took my sign up, it might get heated, so we may need to change it, so...
It's illegal to take it out on a...
I say, messing with the election signs probably, you don't wanna mess with...
It's a federal offense.
No, no, bridge, bridge code, bridge statute, Tennessee state statute, if, if it's on the right of way, it's not illegal.
No, I'm talking about other candidates.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but they can take, they can take it out, and what might happen is it might be blamed on another candidate or something like that, so we, that's why I think we should address this sooner or later, not tonight, but we need to...
Let's just add it to the next month?
Add it, add it next, next month, so.
That's, that's his agenda item. Now...
Let, let me say this, too, there's certain things, a, a side train, it, for the roads to come in, and that's a, that's a little bit different, so, uh, a lot, a lot of times, I, I see a lot of these things in a side train, and that's illegal, too, that means you can't see, it look like an intersection, and, uh, so I, I would advise not to change that, because that's a safety issue, and, uh, you know...
Okay, yes, sir.
All right, so we're moving on from that, then putting that on for next month, so we can discuss all that. The only other thing I wanted to, uh, just ask a question, so I don't know if I need to add that to the agenda, it's gonna take like two minutes.
A question, sure.
Yeah.
Just wanna know where we're at with the tornado siren.
We had a, a meeting today, as a matter of fact, we've been trying to get all the parties together, so we were able to get Jeff Crockett, the sales rep for the company, Les, and Derek, and myself, and Danielle, and we all sat down with our questions, because Jeff really didn't have, he wasn't on, he didn't, nobody really clued him in on this, so what we're, what is, has been decided is that the component that will pick up the radio, whatever it's called, will be in their office up here, uh, the siren will be on a pole across in the grassy area there, uh, so we will have control of all of our stuff right here, rather than putting in Gornville or some other city, and depending on them, if there were problems...
I don't think that's even an option anymore.
Well...
That, that's costing more.
Yeah, it's costing, it costs us double the money.
But it gives us, well, no, it only costs six thousand dollars more, we added it in, it gives us, gives us the autonomy of controlling our own things from here, though, and Jeff is more than gracious to say, yes, we will be the manual backup to the computer if we need that, so, uh, and then the pole, we, there's a right of way right by the school over here that we can put it in, so Jeff was really on board with it to help us, Les and Derek, I think we all understand better now the process, and it's moving forward, so he's gonna, he's gone back and he's gonna give us a, send a purchase order request for us to move forward with it. Yes, sir?
I was just wondering, what, you said, who wasn't brought up this, wasn't sure what was going on with this?
Said Jeff Crockett.
Jeff, Jeff was...
Jeff, Jeff met here today, and he had his own questions about...
Yeah, he, he had a lot of questions about this work, 'cause, um, anyway, it was all resolved, and he's more than happy to let it go up there with his, with this.
Well, he thought we were piggybacking off Gornville.
Well, that's what we were trying to do, because it would have saved the city money.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just telling you why you...
So my question there, you're, you're telling me that the, the order that's coming in is only gonna be six thousand dollars more than it would have been?
Right, about six or seven thousand dollars more, right.
That's it?
Yes, and, and it gives us the autonomy of controlling everything from here, if something happened at two o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, uh, and the signal wasn't working properly, and they had to do it manually, somebody might not be over there, we know, we know someone's in this office, and their dispatch, also, so their dispatch is gonna send...
It's not a manual system.
But you have a manual override?
There's a backup, there's a backup.
But the thing was going to be, is going to be at EMS, if we all grouped together, they were gonna put it at EMS, so hopefully be there twenty-four hours a day.
That was my question, that was my question was...
That's where it is.
Having that as a...
But I mean, that would be Gorsel South Cartagena, that's what it would have been.
They can still do it up here.
They're not going to, they bought their own system.
Well, probably 'cause they want the autonomy, which is probably a little bit better to go.
Oh, because we didn't make a decision fast enough, they ordered it, that's what it was.
Well, okay, let me just put it this way, we just put a fifty thousand dollar change order for this thing, and we're talking about six thousand more for this.
You're throwing two items into one, we're talking about one thing there, but you're saying six, and I'm just, I'm, when it comes in, I won't see that it's only six.
If Jeff's idea is that this is the best for them, I think he's the one we kinda need, and Les and Derek, they're the ones who are gonna have to be responsible for doing the testing and everything once this is in, so we kinda have to let them have a little leeway in how this works, I think, we've got, kinda... It's gonna be exactly what you're asking for, it's just that we will have the autonomy of having it right here beside of us, and so there's more control over that, and Jeff agreed with that, so, yes, sir?
Much to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all right.
Let, let me, can I have one thing before we adjourn, just, I'll be talking about, if you're talking about election signs being on, on the right of way, the state supersedes that, so no matter what we say, that they can or can't, then election signs cannot be on the right of way.
So you have to put it in private property, not on the right of way?
Yes.
So if you wanna make it, if you wanna change ordinance...